This meeting to order, the El Segundo City Council meeting, February 2nd, 2021. We're conducting this evening's meeting in a virtual setting. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations. Chamber is currently closed to the public. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live this evening on Spectrum, Channel 3 and 22, AT&amp;T, U-verse, Channel 99, or El SegundoTV at youtube.com, or may access remotely via Zoom from an electronic device of choice. The meeting information for joining is outlined on tonight's agenda, which can be found online. Please remember to mute your mics when not speaking and council members, if making a motion or a second on a motion, please do so using your last name in order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. And we are fortunate to have Pastor Harding, Wes Harding here of the Bridge Church. He's going to lead us the invocation and then we'll have Council Member Nichol lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Pastor Harding, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Just to confirm, everybody can hear me? We're good, thank you. Let us pray. Gentleman, Father, as we gather today to discuss the business of the city, I ask that we would come with grateful hearts, open minds, and community-minded goals. We are so grateful and thankful for this community, community of leaders, first responders, the city-paid people who work more for the community than the pay. They serve us so well, treating us often better than we deserve. Thank you for the community of El Segundo and your blessing on it. With open minds, may we receive ideas and beliefs, being respectful of our differences and not threatened by them. Help us to replace fear with insight, being patient and kind as we listen and discuss the business of El Segundo. Heavenly Father, remind us that strength, real strength, can be found in compromise, working together to find that common ground. Empower us to move forward with shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and what unites us, focusing on that to overcome any roadblocks that our ego or fear may put up. Today, help us listen well, being open to other ideas and beliefs, and help us seek community over our individual differences. Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us on this Zoom call. Thank you for being with us in this community of El Segundo, constantly reminding us that we are neighbors first and foremost. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Harding, Council Member Nichol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everyone will please stand. If you cannot see a flag where you are, please face City Hall's flag. Hand over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Council Member Giroux?
Here.
Council Member Nichol?
Here.
Council Member Purstuck?
Here.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Here.
And Mayor Boiles?
Here.
All right, gang's all here.
Thank you. All right, now's the time and place for public communications. Given that we're on Zoom in a virtual environment, those wishing to speak, please click the hand icon and the host will announce your name when it's your turn to speak. If you're dialing in from a phone, you'll need to press star nine to raise the icon hand and star six to unmute. And clerks are ready, at the ready right now to handle this. And so I'll turn it over to you, Mona and Tracy. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay.
So just make sure no one in the, right now that's in the attendee section wants to speak during public communications. No one's raising their hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, appreciate that. All right, is there, have there, have we received any written public comments, Madam Clerk?
We have not.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to special presentations this evening. I know we've got some members of our DEI Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee that are on the call. I see at least one, couple of them, actually, four. And so I'm going to read the proclamation for Black History Month and then some members of the committee will accept and I'm sure they'd like to say a few words. So proclamation, whereas Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12, 1926, and for many years, the second week of February, chosen so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, was celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and unconscious bias. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council, the city of El Segundo, California, hereby proclaim the month of February 2021, Black History Month, and urge all citizens to join together in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. And we've got DEI committed Chair Chad McFadden, also very recognizable on the soccer pitch, maybe not with COVID right now, but Mr. McFadden, I'll turn it over to you. I also see Kenneth Chansey, good to see you, another member of the DEI committee. And I thought I saw Avery Smith, oh Christina Vasquez and Kelsey Chidick, wow, it's great to see you all. So Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I think we have one more we can't see, Coach Woody's own as well. Yeah, so thank you guys so much for the proclamation. We really appreciate it. You know, we had as many folks as we could come out tonight to sort of represent and be here for the proclamation. One thing that I think is really interesting about, you name checked Dr. Woodson in the proclamation, you know, I did a little research on him today because I didn't know much about him. You know, he was born in 1875 to two former slaves and, you know, he went on to get his master's degree from University of Chicago. He went on to get his doctorate from Harvard in history. And you know, one thing that I read about him is is very, very important to him that every group of people have their history. And I think that's just a real statement that he always made is like, if you take away someone's history, you know, they won't be able to bring the same things that, you know, we all, we all would like to bring to the table, that conference of who you are, et cetera. So through this pursuit that he had of always trying to make sure that the history back then references Negro history, African-American history, you know, now it transforms of black history. You know, I think the thing about him that's so, so interesting is that he wasn't doing all of this to carve out this segment of the population and make sure their history was there. His real goal through, from what I read, was that he wished that that was just part of American history. I think that's something that has really, really hit me in like sort of doing my, my research today about him is that, you know, with the committee, you know, at least half of us are here tonight, you know, we're trying to look at the town of El Segundo, a much smaller segment than, you know, all of America and all of American history. But you know, we aren't all from the same place, we don't come from the same history. And I think it's just really nice that we have this proclamation as another reminder that we're all trying to get the same story out of El Segundo, you know, and the greater America as well, but you know, we don't have to all come the same place and we definitely don't need our own Facebook pages or rags or mags that, you know, it really is about the whole group. So thank you guys so much for, you know, having this proclamation and thank you to the DEI that could make it tonight. Much appreciated, guys.
Awesome, thank you so much for being here. You got a, just incredibly powerhouse committee. I know we had a lot of people apply, I can't remember the number, but it was like vetted from sixty-something, I think, down to the applicants that council was fortunate to interview. And you guys are all tremendous, thank you. I would ask you, Mr. Smith, for the weather, but we don't have time right now for that. But it's great seeing you all. Counsel, any other, any comments from the council? Okay, I think we're good, thanks. Thanks Chad.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you for being on, have a great evening. Okay, next up, we have the COVID-19 update from, other than Chief Calvin. Chief, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. And once again, last council meeting, I had to follow Space Force and now I have to follow the DEI committee that did an outstanding job. So this is becoming more and more difficult. I do have a presentation to present to the community. I'll go through the slide decks quickly here, sir, and apologies, I just lost it on my screen. And I want to hit on the health metrics again, but just shortly on that and talk about where we're heading with the current surge. I'll give an update as it relates to changes at the state level and the county level. We'll talk about vaccinations and then I'll end with some good news on our cost recovery efforts with FEMA. And so again, these, these are as of today, the numbers have continued to increase in our surge, but I think even though these are rather large ominous numbers, what we're beginning to see is a decline in many of the categories that are important to us. The overall number of new cases and the overall number of deaths, although unfortunate, they're actually coming down substantially from where we were seeing in the previous weeks. And I think of most importance is our ICU capacity. You'll see now, for the first time in several presentations, we actually have an ICU capacity of almost 10%. This was trending at 0% for over a month, which means our hospital surge is subsiding and we have an ability now to continue to treat people that are sick with COVID. This is, in my opinion, a very good trend. If you look at the comparison to LA County, the South Bay and El Segundo, all substantial decreases in the case rate, in the test positivity, the downward trajectory is always good news and we'll hope that this will continue as we manage this latest post-holiday surge. And we'll be monitoring closely the LA County case rate and test positivity as well as that Healthy Places Index, because now this is going to be important with some changes that have occurred that the governor made. Again, these are downward trajectory in all sectors, which is good news. Most importantly, this was a number that we've been watching very closely, the, the R effect number, this is the ability of trans, of communicating the disease from one person to the, to another. The higher this number goes, the more likely of community spread. We're now seeing that number declining to point seven-six, well below one. That's a good sign that the COVID spread is decreasing substantially and we'll continually hope for that number to decrease. These are all good trends. The changes at the state level are substantial. The governor lifted the regional state home order and we're back now to the tiered strategy for each county. And he chose to do this lifting of the regional state home order primarily based on the hospital availability and ICU bed availability. I'll talk a little bit more about where the county is in a moment, we go back to looking at our tiered strategy here in LA County. Governor Newsom also announced that California is updating their administration for vaccines. And if you'll remember, we were talking early on that this was going to be a work-based priority based on the high-risk employee groups. The governor's now identified that he's changing that to a priority based on age group, not work group, those that are 65 and older. He also announced that he'll be doing a prioritization split of 80/20. Eighty percent of the vaccines go into the age group and 20% going to disproportionately impacted communities. And then lastly, he identified that we're now transitioning from what was referred to as a decentralized response to COVID-19 vaccinations, where each county was charged with the distribution and tracking of the COVID-19 vaccines to a centralized approach, where Blue Shield of California and Salesforce, by Accenture, will be charged with the distribution. And I'll talk, I'll talk a bit about that in a moment also, as we, as we look to learn more of how these changes will affect us locally. In response, LA County went back to the tiered status. We're at the widespread, which is still the highest. We're looking for an adjusted case rate to be below seven. You'll see the current number, but again, these numbers are in a downward trajectory. The case positivity rate, we need that to be below eight, it's 11.2 and tracking in the right direction. And the health equity quartile needs to be below eight, it's at 15. But again, these are positive trends in, going in the right direction. That said, if you'll remember, we need to hold in this category of a downward trend for three weeks and we need to be in a lower trend or red for at least two weeks. And so we still have a bit of time ahead of us before we can transition from the purple widespread to the red substantial. We'll continue to watch this and report out to the community on, on these trends. As it relates to health orders, this was an important change. On January 29th, the LA County Public Health Officer released a new health order and I've highlighted, there were a number of changes that were made. The most important ones for our community was allowing of outdoor gatherings. Three households maximum in the outside area can now gather for socialization. This was an important one and our, our team worked very hard from the city manager's office, city manager Mitnick, deputy city manager Voss, our communications team and the incident management team, as long, as well as public works and building and safety, worked really hard with our local restaurants to make sure that they are prepared for outdoor dining. The outdoor dining is now allowed. We've reinstituted our permitting process and encroachment permitting process and we were quick to help as many restaurants open up to the outside dining, which was a 50% maximum and tables distancing in eight feet apart. And anecdotally, I can tell you, having talked to a few of the restaurant owners, we are seeing our community take advantage of this new opportunity and I'm going to be certainly looking forward to continuing to support our local restaurants going forward. We also saw some changes in outdoor activities. Tennis courts, pickleball courts and playgrounds are now allowed for outdoor gatherings that are following social distancing in our normal face call, face covering protocols. And so the LA County health orders, as they change, we stay abreast of those. We continually communicate with LA Public Health and we're prepared locally to respond very quickly to those changes and help support our community. I'd like to talk a little bit about the vaccination process. Certainly it was unexpected, the governor was going to make the change that he made. I had reported that we had developed in El Segundo at our station too, a point of distribution and a point of vaccination. We were successful in vaccinating 130 shots in the arm, first and second doses. All of the fire department, some of our police officers and other critical staff received the vaccinations. We demonstrated that we've got a really good system. We are able to track the vaccine. We wasted not one vaccination and I think that we were and are continuing to be positioned to do very well for our community. In that respect, we ordered through our database an additional eight, 800 vaccines and we're prepared to order more. We had put together plans to vaccinate Park Vista residents. We discussed and communicated and developed a plan for El Segundo school district employees, DaVinci School District employees, other critical city employees. We had met with members from Raytheon and they actually came out and witnessed our, our vaccine clinic and were impressed by that and we were reaching out to potentially partner with them. And what we're finding is a supply issue. And I wish I had better news to tell you, we know for certain that these 800 vaccines will be ordered and we know for certain when they'll be delivered, but quite frankly, I can't provide that information. What I can tell you is that we will work tirelessly to find opportunities for our police officers, for our Park Vista residents, for our members in our community that are in the house, homebound category, for those that are over 65 and certainly for our school employees, because we want the kids back in school and focusing on our other critical city employees. We will continue to work very hard to find the vaccinations and/or find opportunities for vaccinations. In the meantime, I encourage the community to work through your healthcare providers, work through the LA County Public Health vaccine supersites and potentially even through local pharmacies to try to get vaccinated. Some of the numbers that we're seeing right now, the United States is, has vaccinated over 32 million people and California, 3.5 million people have been vaccinated and here in LA County, 917,000. We're certainly looking to see that number increase substantially. And I'd like to be able to report that we're in a position and we're willing to help vaccinate at least 16,000 people or more here in El Segundo, if given the opportunity. As it relates to our final news, and that is as it relates to cost recovery, we received information, the initial data that we provided to FEMA were our estimates, following the estimates FEMA went through. And I really like to acknowledge Randy Collins and Carolyn Erner and the team from finance that have been working hard with our cost recovery efforts. And we found out that we are indeed receiving an additional $537,717 in FEMA cost recovery. So to date, we are, been acknowledged and we'll be receiving 1.5 million, a little bit north of that. And we're wa, watching very closely with the next round of the COVID relief funding, because there are some discussions of more support for local and state government and we will certainly be positioned if indeed we find out that we're available to receive additional funding. And I'm sure Randy Collins will be working hard to, to get as much money as possible. So apologize, it was a little bit lengthy, but I wanted to provide some additional information as related to vaccines and the changes on the health order and I'm available for any questions, sir. Sorry, Mayor, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, would you mind closing the presentation, Chief, so we can see everybody? That's perfect. Yeah, Carol.
I have one question. I know we had talked at the last meeting about providing transport for people that have appointments. Have we been able to coordinate that with the Dawson Center and Dial-A-Ride?
We're still working on that. We don't have anything definitive and the issues that we're finding is that people are having trouble getting, getting the appointments and then we haven't found yet somebody that said, hey, I have an appointment, I need a ride. What we are looking at is a potential opportunity for our Park Vista group setting to go off-site and we're looking to arrange transportation for that group in a, in a mass transportation mode. But beyond that, ma'am, I don't have anything else to report.
Any other comments from council? Doesn't look like it. All right, well done, Chief. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Chief, real quick, just a question, so, so I can wrap my head around this. It was originally tasked, when you said it was decentralized, so the counties were tasked with, you know, the number of vaccinations that were going out, where they were going to the sites, tracking the number of people that were receiving the doses. Now going centralized approach, meaning like there's two companies, Salesforce and Blue Shields, you said, is handling it?
Yes, sir.
You know, do we, do you, do you know if there's any data out there in regards to like how many doses are potentially being lost for not being used on a day where if, you know, say Dodger Stadium had 100,000 doses, but only 90,000 people showed up that day, like that sort of thing? Do you have any information on that? Are you receiving any of that information from the county?
No, sir, I don't have any information, although I've read reports, I've heard anecdotally that there's been waste, that we know that we had some situation here locally at a local pharmacy. I do know that the county of Los Angeles has regularly communicated that all vaccines should be utilized and they put in place protocols that there's a timeline is once you pop the tap on a vial, how long that vaccine can be out in the open and providing opportunities for the clinics and sites to better manage. But unfortunately, sir, I don't have that information. There is waste though and it's disappointing, it's frustrating. And this is why, quite frankly, I think that pushing it to the local level as much as possible is the best. We know our community the best, we know how to prepare for local clinics, we've demonstrated with zero waste and we're good at, at this process. And it's frustrating to know that now the state has changed the protocols and we're trying to determine what those protocols are. We're trying to make sure that we get a shot in, in as many arms as possible without any waste. Ultimately though, sir, I don't have that information.
Okay, thank you. Now if you in, in your dealings or in your calls, if you feel at any point that a letter from our board in support of anything like that would be helpful, please don't hesitate, I think, I can't speak for the rest of my fellow council people, but I would be in support of anything along those lines.
Yes, sir. I certainly will. Thank you.
Hey Chief, quick question. I know I looked for my mother-in-law, she's 87, we looked at Dodger Stadium, she certainly qualifies, given her age. There was like absolutely nothing available on the calendar for the entire month of February, March and beyond. So is the idea that by privatizing going to Blue Cross or Blue Shield, I forget which, Blue Shield and Salesforce and Accenture, the idea that there's just been major inefficiencies in the distribution and they're going to improve the roll, speed up the rollout or what?
I wish I could have an answer for you and I don't. That would certainly be a hope. My sense is there'll probably be a shift away from pushing through the county to supersites to maybe some other approach with it's going through hospitals and pharmacies. But again, we don't know yet. And there is a little bit of frustration in the uncertainty as to how this is going to change, the metrics that will be used, how the state will authorize based off population, how that will be pushed out. Again, my, my hope is that we can run a dual track in that, that is, take advantage of the systems that are in place right now. And I spoke to the community about the LA area fire chiefs have, had established a process by which we vaccinated 16,000 first responders and we did it in less than a month. And if they'd given us more vaccines, we could have doubled or tripled that number. It would, it would be nice to think that the state would recognize existing systems that are being operated efficiently and continue supply chain to those while they set up a second track, but it doesn't appear that's the case. It appears that they're basically turning off the spigot right now, they're going to recalibrate and, and then communicate to the counties and to other constituents how they're going to do it. And the reason I say that, as I was on a Zoom conference call yesterday with a top official from LA County Public Health, and unfortunately, they didn't have an answer either. So we're in a wait and see mode.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor Potem, did you have a comment?
Chief, just, just one more question. If they're going to be shutting down the, the track as it is now, that, as I, as I understand it, when you got your injection, only now to that process where at the time of ejection, you automatically received the appointment for the follow-up injection?
Correct.
Is that, because that, that's a county system that does that. Is that county system disappearing and the state will, will take over the second injection appointment? Because that's giving people first injections. I mean, that's, that's, you can roll that system out anyhow. It's the follow-up injections that I think, I think we have some concern. Do we have any clarity on the way that looks?
From what I heard, those that received the first vaccination, there's enough dosage to receive the second vaccination. In the current system, which is through CalVax, which is the county, the statewide website is In the current system, which is through CalVax, which is the county, the statewide website is still going to be utilized. So I think with with pretty, pretty much certainty, we can anticipate the second dose going into arms of those that need it, utilizing existing supplies that are already in place. And by way of example, LA County had only utilized about sixty percent of their allocated vaccinations. And so there was enough that appeared to get the second shot in the arm. It's going forward now that the state's taking it over. There's a lot of uncertainty and I just don't have an answer as to what they'll use. It to me would make sense to continue to use the CalVax website. It's an effective website, it does a great job of communicating with the constituents as to when their appointment is, it gives reminders of the date of the appointment, the time, the place. It gives follow-ups a month later, if it's a Moderna, as to showing up for the same place and getting their vaccine. It's a well-coordinated site, but but I just don't have the answer to that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that looks to be it. Thank you, Chief.
I just have one question. So one of the things that I found in making the appointment for my mother is that, you know, it's very, it's, you need to be very efficient online. You know, my mom's ninety-three, so there's no way she would have been able to coordinate that herself. And I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that are not technically savvy. So is there a service we could provide, at least if we can't get transportation, at least a service of providing technical support? And getting, you know, having them do an outreach program where we call people, get their information and try to help them establish appointments. Because I know unless you're technically savvy, it's going to be really hard to get an appointment.
Yes, ma'am, we could certainly look into that and I can report back. And you're right. From experience, even even though we had our own clinic, regularly I go to the website and I try to put a availability to see if I can get on it and you have to have pretty, pretty substantial computer skills to stay up on where to go, how to click on and the like, but good, good point, ma'am, and we'll certainly look into that and report back.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes special presentations. We're on to procedural motions. Stating your last name, do we have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only?
Jeru, so move.
Thanks, sir. Do we have a second?
Per sec, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Firstak?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Pimto?
Aye.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Right, pass, five oh.
Okay, we are on to the consent calendar. Any polls? Okay, I would like to pull five and it's really just for purposes of clarification. Because the title on the agenda only is a little bit misleading in my estimation. So do we have a motion to approve items one through four?
Jeru, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Nichol, second.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please take a voice vote?
Yes. Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Firstak?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Pimto?
Aye.
Andrew, Andrew Boils. Sorry, I'm looking at your name.
That works too. Yes, yes.
Boils, I apologize. One through four, with the exception of five, pass.
Okay, I'll just read item five real quick. Way fifty thousand dollars in permitting fees and associated costs for outdoor dining areas. Scott, no surprise that you discussed this earlier today. Would you just please clarify for the public if any restaurants are paying attention? I know Marsha Hansen paying pretty much everybody in the restaurant community today about this item. So if you could just clarify what it is we're actually doing, that'd be great.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is very simple. What staff is requesting of the council is to continue the outdoor dining program that's in place right now, as well as the barricades. And no charge to local restaurants and businesses through the end of the calendar year, so all the way through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The reference to the money, that just reflects what the the direct and indirect cost estimates are of this. I will tell you, given what's going on with the local economy, it's, it's a request well worth it. And that's really it. Continue what we have for one, for one year.
I just have, I, this is, I have one question. Originally, I know that we rented the Ballards and we talked about potentially buying them over, over time, the the cost would be beneficial to us to buy them. Have we looked into that and what's the status of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. The initial ones were quite expensive, then we have some others are out there that the orange ones, which are relatively inexpensive. I'm gonna have, if Elias Sassoon, our Public Works Director, is available, I don't see him there, he can answer that. So Elias, can you chime in? Well, if he's not chiming in, we will get an answer for you by the end of the council meeting.
Elias is on. Hi, Mayor Boils and members of council, if I may. I did speak to Elias about this item. And some of them were expensive barricades that we were renting. Elias found a way to replace those with some less expensive orange barricades. And we also were able to, for our partnership with the LA Air Force Base, borrow some barricades from the Air Force Base. So we are not currently renting barricades. We have rented them over the last several months since we started this. And there's Elias. I got that right so far.
Yes, ma'am, you sure do. Thank you so much. Thank you for the question. Yeah, we, we have purchased those barricades, we no longer are renting them. In fact, we have a few already additional barricades in our, in our yard, in case we have more permits to issue. So I'm very pleased to inform you, we no longer are making any, any payments for rental.
Great, all right. Councilmember Firstak says thumbs up. Thank you, Mr. Sassoon. So I will make a motion to approve item five.
Jeru, second.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote on item five?
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Firstak? Mayor Proton Pimto?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, pass this five oh.
Thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. We're on to staff presentations, item six, which is the twenty twenty Customer Satisfaction Survey Recommendation, Receiving and Filing the City's Fourth Annual Customer Satisfaction Survey Results That Were Conducted With Residents and Businesses Utilizing the Net Promoter Score NPS Methodology. Mr. Mitnik will report on this.
Our Deputy City Manager Barbara Boss will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnik. Mayor Boils, members of council, as the title indicates, this is our fourth year of doing the Net Promoter Customer Satisfaction Survey. Net promoter refers to a methodology of gathering and John Dickey's on the line here, you see. He will be summarizing his presentation or the results during his presentation, but it's a measurement of the number of people who would recommend your business and who would not recommend your business essentially. And, you know, now that we have our fourth year going, we have some, you know, a trend, so we can look at it over time. Trend lines starting to form. And really, the reason that council directed staff to do this four years ago was so that we could better understand how the city treats its customers, which is anybody who comes to the city hall for any type of service. Calls in, wants to get a permit, needs to pay a bill. This measures their customer satisfaction with that interaction with the city. So we think it's really important information. Wanted to note that over the years, and Joe Lilio originally facilitated this process, this is transition over the last couple of years to me, but we take a look at the results and if there are areas that are areas of concern, so there's strengths and then there's areas of concerns within the results. There are areas of concerns, then we take action at the staff level to address those areas. And so each year when we send out the letter to the residents and the businesses, we remind them of what the areas of concern were in the previous year, and then we list out what actions we took to address those areas. In addition to that, we contact some of the respondents. If there's anything that they bring up that we can specifically address them, a phone call from me or other staff to talk about how we can improve our customer service. And finally, I just want to mention that this aligns with the city's strategic plan, strategic goals. And it's goal number five, enhance customer service engagement and communications and enhance diversity, equity and inclusion. This is really all about customer service. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. John Dickey. And he has facilitated, he's an expert in the Net Promoter Score. And he's facilitated this process now for each of the four years. And he's going to share the results. So, Mr. Dickey.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, good, fantastic. Well, I'm gonna get right down to it on, share my screen with you. The first presentation that we're gonna go through here is on the business survey. And
John, you muted. John, there you go.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. As soon as I slid something over, it muted me. My apologies. All right, so we've conducted this survey now, as Barbara has indicated, for four years. And so we have a process down and that's important because in order to look at trends and feel comfortable with what the data is saying year over year, you don't want to make large sweeping changes to the process. But we, I will say this much, we do always ask ourselves the questions like, are we asking the right questions? Okay, particularly amongst some of the attributes and so forth, the Net Promoter Score. But what I want to do here is get right into this and show you here that in, in conducting that promoter source, it's important, first off, I think that everybody understands what this is all about. Now, are there any new members to council this year, Barbara, versus in the last couple of years? Okay, so as you are aware, then, the Net Promoter Process is a method of assessing really customer loyalty beyond that of customer satisfaction. And we're asking the business owners as well as your residents, because we actually conduct two different surveys. We're asking them the likelihood that they would recommend the services of the city of El Segundo to a friend or business colleague. Or in the case of residents, to a family member potentially as well. And when we look at that net promoter and that scale of zero to ten, we, we segment that scale and look at the people that give scores of nine or ten, we classify those individuals as promoters. They're, or I heard somebody refer to them as avid fans. Whereas the people that are providing scores of six or less, these are detractors. These are the people that are very disgruntled with the services and the situations that they've had with the city, the experiences that they've had. Individuals that get sevens and eights, they typically be, they would be classified as passive or individuals that really don't have a strong opinion one way or another. We look at this then and all of the results then, and then we, we then categorize those in terms of percentage of nines and tens, the percentage of passes and the percentage of detractors. And from that, then we can come up with a net promoter score. So as you can see here in this particular example, this, this organization had a net promoter score of forty-eight because they had fifty-six promoters and eight percent detractors. Now, in your survey of your businesses, we sent out thirty-seven hundred and eighty-six invitations emailed to the various businesses in the city of El Segundo. Hundred and eighty of those were undeliverable, twenty opted out. Bottom line is, we got a seven point nine percent response rate or two hundred and eighty-two responses as a result of this survey. It is slightly lower than the nine percent in two thousand and nineteen, but I think the thing that I look at is that given all the things going on and the fact that there were a lot of us, you know, we were in an election cycle. So a lot of people were probably inundated with, you know, surveys and this, that and the other. They, you know, getting a seven point nine percent response rate is pretty darn good. The actual NPS score for the city this year was a forty-seven percent. It is seven percent lower than last year, but I, but we have to keep in mind anything above forty percent in a public environment is considered pretty good. Okay, it's really a pretty good score. So I, I don't think any alarm bells should go off here. I mean, naturally, we would have hoped to retain that fifty-four percent from two thousand and nineteen. And I'm gonna show you some comparative scores in a moment here. But again, the forty-seven percent is still a pretty solid score. There were three attributes that we found that scored less than four point O on a scale one to five in terms of satisfaction. We had business development and attraction policies, business license renewal process and responsiveness and knowledge competency of building, the planning and building and safety departments. On the other hand, though, we had three modest strengths and they continue to be the business responsive, or the responsiveness and knowledge of the fire department and field inspection services, availability responsiveness of the police department and the license renewal process. Now, ideally, we'd like to see these scores rise even above four point three three, but they're headed certainly in the right direction. Again, as I say, said before, your score is a forty-seven percent. Well, how did we come, arrive at that? Well, sixty-three percent of the respondents gave you scores of nine or a ten. All right, whereas sixteen percent are classified as detractors. The main reason why we saw that these detractors were coming up was probably dealing with the business development attraction policies and some of the zoning policies. Okay, you know, that's something for us to consider. Again, these were the loyalty drivers that we looked at separately from that promoter score. And you can see here that on, you know, we had three attributes that came in less than four point O. All right. And again, you know, we asked anybody that gave a score of eight or less, essentially, what should the city concentrate on in order that it might achieve a higher score? And not surprising, from the business community, we heard a lot of commentary about supporting small businesses. Now, that attribute never, has never shown up even close to these kind of scores in the previous three years. But two thousand and twenty isn't anything close to the past three years in terms of what we all have gone through and particularly small businesses. So the dilemma in many respects is trying to find out what type of support are they looking for? And so I challenge the city and all of you to try to dig in deeper and to find what those types of, you know, services and support that they're looking for. In terms of the comparative data over the last four years, in terms of the number of respondents, we see here, we had two hundred and eighty-two respondents, which is, you know, slightly lower as we saw from two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. The Net Promoter Score, while it dropped, it didn't drop any lower than it was in forty, at forty-seven percent in two thousand and eighteen. The issue, as I said before, primary issue, support of small businesses was nowhere to be found in the three previous cycles. The attribute scoring the highest was business license renewal process at four point three one, which is nice to see there. But unfortunately, the lowest one was a three point six four, which was the city zoning policies. Which I want to point out, though, is still higher than the last time it was the lowest score back in two thousand and eighteen at a three point five two. So, there, you can see the slight improvement there. Again, your trends in terms of the net promoter score or your loyalty of the businesses, we saw a peak in 2019 of 54% with a drop back down to the level we recognized in 2018 of 47%. The big issue here that we see is that we're, the number or the, I should say, the percentage of passes is staying relatively the same over the last three years, okay? Within a percent or so. But where we saw an uptick, unfortunately, was the percentage of detractors in 2020. You know, it was a 3% jump there. All right. Any questions with respect to the business survey?
Yeah, Mr. Dickey, I have a question. Can you go back to the graph that was the red bar chart?
Okay. Yes, I think.
Yeah, I just, when people reply, the eights or less, so passives and detractors, we're asking them an open form question about why, right? And then your firm is categorizing those comments. Is that correct?
That is correct. And they'll give a variety of comments and we basically force, you know, based on all of the information, we do some text analysis and determine that the small business support is the number one issue.
Got it. Well, the reason I bring it up is I saw at quick glance, at least three topics that are customer experience focused. And I wanted to emphasize these because we have a strategic priority all around customer service, which Barbara Boss just touched on. If you look at staff responsiveness, second from the right, you look at improved customer service and improved city staff, you're already about 12% of total comments right there. So, I think we'd be remiss at pointing that out, but those, to me, all say the same thing, which is our staff, we need to do a better job. And as we've talked about, getting to that answer of yes as a culture, as opposed to throwing up barriers as to why something can't be done. And I would just point out that with, what I'm seeing from, because I love MPS methodology from the business community, we're not there yet. And if you take the support small business and then you take the 12 points related to customer experience, you could make the argument, I would think, that that fits into one broad category as a whole and that we need to do a better job. So, I just wanted to point that out because there's no point in doing a survey if we're not looking into it and making some informed decisions about what we want to do differently going forward. And so, yeah, I just want to point that out. Thank you.
And this is Carol Persic. I also wanted to point out, you know, we went up on the business license and we just launched the new online business services to do your business license. So, obviously, people are happy about that and that's something that we should continue to push to do things online. The other thing I was wondering, you know, the timing of the survey, you know, there's a couple of times generally, not obviously this year because this was an anomaly, but generally, there's a couple of times a year, especially around 4th of July or around 4th of July, as well as when people go to the Easter time, when they go to register their kids for summer classes, a lot of people are going to our website. So, I'm wondering if we could time the survey around those two times so that we could capture more activity, you know, so that there's more traffic on our website and there's more traffic and awareness of the city services. So, I just, because I, that 286 is such a low number, I'd really, really want to, that should be one of our goals is to get that up, you know, at least double that for the next year because I think 286 is a very, very low subset of residents.
But this wasn't residents, this was businesses. But I understand nonetheless what you're saying. I think the one thing that I would, I would comment on is that it is important to determine when is the most appropriate time to conduct these surveys for the city. I guess the only concern that I would have, I would look at it from the eyes of the customer, okay? Ask yourself the question, at what time of year would these businesses most likely be using the most services of the city? And then to go out with the survey roughly 30 to 60 days after that. Let it soak in, okay? And then, and then survey them. I don't, I think to survey them during the, during the peak time of their, of using the services, you're going to get some people that had the experiences, some that didn't. Okay, and then, so their decisions would be, or their scores would be based upon possibly experiences from the previous year. Possibly.
And Mr. Dickey, just one more observation, which is, at least from me anyways, we've talked in years past about collecting and how it's been challenging. I think we piloted a program in the planning department, what was formerly the planning department, to collect at the transaction level. To Councilmember Persik's point, yeah, that I think that sticking to the same time of year, so we're not moving the goalposts in terms of when the surveys conduct is important. And I also think we still need to get that, figure out a way to get that transactional MPS data. I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we've ever quite figured that out, although we've been talking about it for about four years.
Yeah, yes, sir. We did try to institute a transaction-based system, based, I think, four or five different services that the city offered. And Barbara probably has a lot more information on that. I can tell you that, that anybody that was involved in that whole process was never completely satisfied at the end in terms of how that all went about. I mean, we tried mightily, but you know, the problem is, is that that we were finding is that people would go in to the office and if there was any queue involved in trying to service, they got, just completed, got out of there and get on to their normal day-to-day lives. So, that the, the other question in my mind would be to have some sort of transaction-based system where if I was going in to renew, I'm just going to use this as an example. It may not be a good one, but I think everybody can follow me on this. Is that if I go in to renew my business license and I have to go in to the city offices to do that, instead of having me go to a kiosk to ask me that question, is that if there's a way in which we can target and find, there's the individual, they came in on November the 20th, renewed their license, that on the following week or the following month, we surveyed them on that experience. And so, we reached out to them in a much more direct way as opposed to relying on them to take their time to stop over at the kiosk and.
Yeah, I just, and I don't want to belabor the point, but it has been four years, we've talked about it, we haven't gotten it there. And I just, from my own business and other organizations' experience, I can tell you, and I know you know this, John, because this is what you do for a living, the data that you get that's more current, that's based on a transaction is going to be way more useful in terms of taking action. And I think, like I think about our business, we send text, email, and we call the client, every client that uses us. And we probably get 15% adoption, but that's a pretty good sample size. And it's, it's quick, one through 10, little qualitative comments. So, this isn't for you, Mr. Dickey, it's more for staff. If council is supportive of this, I would, and maybe we have to look at this again in our strategic plan when we allocate workload. But I would strongly urge us to reconsider how we can get that transactional data. If we truly want to be a culture of yes and superior customer service, we have to have that. So, I'll get off the soapbox. I'm going to turn over to Mayor Protem because I see you got the hand icon up. Chris.
Yeah, I was just curious is to, if we have any clarity about what the dissatisfaction is with our zoning policies? What are those, you know, tell me, tell me what they mean by that? Because it seems to be a standout low point for each year on the survey. And if there's things that are just dissatisfaction with the way that the general plan looks or if there's individual policy decisions we're making that are constraining our business sector.
Good question. Barbara, do you want to take that or?
I was kind of looking at Tom, but you can't tell because we're on Zoom. But John, were there specific, I didn't see specific details about what zoning policy. But the way that in talking to different businesses and receiving feedback, the way I interpret that is that there are certain areas of the city where the zoning policy makes it very difficult, and if Sam's here too, he can jump on. But it makes it very difficult to develop a property in the current model of what people are looking for in properties. Some parking requirements, floor area ratio. So, there are challenges related to zoning policies that are, I don't want to say deterrence, probably too strong, but make development more difficult and leasing to tenants more difficult in certain areas of the city.
Well, again, I want to go back, though, to the whole MPS model. And that is, is you take the raw data. You look at this not in terms of the aggregate data, but when you're really trying to make improvements, you're looking at the, at the individual respondents. So, if you take, for example, all the individuals that gave you a score of one or two on that scale one to five on the zoning policies, and that's going to give you a subset of people, all right? And you know who those people are based upon the results. Is to use select members of Barbara's team and conduct some others, I mean, we've done this too for clients, but, but it is to go out there and interview those people and ask them very specifically, because, say to them, you know, we didn't score as well as we liked in this particular area and I'd like some of your feedback on this, you know, what could we do to improve? I'm sure they're going to give you some specifics.
Definitely. And Mayor Bois, I also wanted to touch on the transactional surveys. There were the kiosks available, there were some technology challenges with making sure that those were up and running and people just not wanting to stop and provide feedback. But we are thinking about, now that we have the website, the website, there may be ways, like for example, people are very satisfied with renewing their business licenses online, as Councilmember Persik mentioned. After that process is completed, get a survey, a pop-up survey or an email survey that's automated, that goes probably very similar to what you do in your business, that goes to that respondent, that user, the customer, and solicits that information. So, that could be something that we put on our list. Definitely.
I would think Granicus too, I see, I just want to confirm, Mr. Mitnick and Councilmember Nicole, I see your hands up, just one second. I think also, Barbara, that Granicus, I would think, would be able to support an outreach plugin or some kind of functionality with a website where any transaction that's done and you've got the data points on the customer, like phone and email, automated message trigger, here's your MPS. It should be as simple as that. And to Chris's point, Mayor Protem's point about policy decisions, I would, I would venture to bet a lot of money that if you had a transactional system that asked people after they've participated in planning, for example, no offense, Sam, but it's like one of the most contentious departments. People leave unhappy oftentimes. But if you ask them through a net promoter score transaction, how was your experience in planning? They're going to tell you flat out qualitatively why they don't like our policy or what, why this could have been faster, why they could have had better information about the process from the get-go or anticipated expenses from the city, you name it. But that, that data will come from the transactional. So, I would just strongly encourage us to revisit that information. And I'm going to turn over to, I think, Scott, if you don't mind, I'll defer to Councilman Nicole and then I'll go back to you. Is that, is that okay? It's hard to see everybody because the deck's up, so I can't, I gotta keep scrolling, but Councilmember Nicole.
Mr. Mayor, I did not have my hand up. I was not looking at the comments. We can go straight to the city manager.
Sorry, sir. Okay, much better now with the gallery view. Thank you. Mr. Mitnick.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for raising that point about transactional feedback. Think about it, this is something we want to do and I want to take advantage of this to, of course, we're in the chamber, it's like looking in the eye, that we are committed to moving in this direction. If we can't do it prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year, we're definitely come to you as part of the budget to do whatever we have to do to have it. We need the data to augment the MPS data that we're getting here. But you think about your daily lives, I was just thinking about while everybody was talking. In the last couple of months, I've been to the doctor, the dentist, I bought airline tickets or did something with that, had to pay a cable bill, pay a credit card, and very shortly thereafter, maybe a day later, at the longest, I get an email. What was your experience like with your doctor? You did a transaction with the bank. What was that like? We need to do it, not just for the land use transactions, but I would argue that we should do it for everything. Somebody calls the city manager's office, they interact with one of our assistants, how was that experience? I fully embrace it, department heads know it, we have to figure out how to do it. So, council, I don't think we need to get into the weeds tonight about how to do it. I'll put it on my own performance plan that we have to get an option in front of the council and just do it. I don't see it being that complicated. We, we could use the data. I would love to have it as city manager. And I know many of our department heads like to have it so they can see how well their employees are doing. So, we hear you loud and clear, we have to have it to you. So, next year when we do this, you have some good data. So, my full commitment to figure it out and put it in front of you at the longest as part of the budget.
Sounds good. Okay, and Mr. Dickey, I don't think we ever got to the residential, did we?
No, we did not. All right. That's okay. That's all right. Can everybody see the slide? All right. So, in this particular survey, we sent out email addresses. We had a much larger group of potential email addresses this year than we've had in the past. And, but we still also sent out, had the city also sent out mail surveys as well. And then, so we were able to, to take that information altogether. So, we had a total of 527 respondents to some portion of the survey. And 521 actually answered the net promoter question this year around. We ended up with a net promoter score of 51%. Again, that compares very well, you know, in the, in the public sector. And even when you compare that to businesses, business, you know, the businesses in the top ranges are generally in the range of 60 to 75%, you're starting to get within striking distance of that. When comparing the results with the 2019 survey results, the NPS score dropped by 1%. Last year was 52%, we got 51%. But the percentage of detractors also decreased by 2%. So, what we really saw here was an increase in the number of passives this year. So, I mean, I'll take that. I mean, I think anybody would take that way. We would certainly like to see a higher MPS, but, but you know, if that's the way you're going to lose your 1%, having an increase of by the passives is certainly not a terrible situation. Again, what did we find here? The strengths of the city are the maintenance and upkeep of the recreation and park facilities, the quality of the recreation parks programs, availability responsiveness to the police department, certainly your public library system is outstanding, and then the fire and paramedic services. Areas for improvement, the responsiveness and overall vision of city council, and then the condition of the city's infrastructure, streets, sidewalks and public facilities, and the water and sewer billing department and customer service, that being also focused on complaint handling and responsiveness. Okay. Um, so here again, you can see here our breakdown in terms of 63% of the public gave you scores of nine or 10, whereas only 12% gave you scores of six or below. When we compare the performance year over year, okay, we have seen a slight decline. 2017 was our high watermark so far. We have seen slight declines in the, in the three years subsequent to that. I don't have a lot to say behind that because one of the things is, is that the primary reasons seem to be. the primary reasons seem to be changing, okay? You know, we had 21% back in 2017, talk about public works. Now, the issue is losing the small town concept. Last year it was too expensive. So, you know, we, we're dealing with a bit of a moving target, but what we need to do, and, and what I always recommend to our clients is that you have to dig in and have these follow-up conversations with people. And that's where going back and looking at the raw data is important. Now, I might say here, that is, has to be handled much more carefully when you're talking about residents versus businesses, okay? You know, just, that's not a situation where you can just go into that, you know, head, you know, head over heels on that. You have to be very, very careful and mindful of the fact that some of these people, while they, they certainly have given, given all the insight that this is not a confidential survey, they may tend to forget that it is not a confidential survey. The attribute scoring the highest, here we see, again, year over year, the fire department and, and the paramedic services. And their scores continue to stay the same or, or slightly go up, so that, kudos to them. Now, I know that some of you may feel badly about the fact that the overall vision of city council is considered the lowest score. But again, I want to compare it year over year, and that's a 0.68 rise over last year, that's statistically significant. And so I think that's really, really quite good. I mean, something's got to come in lowest, and yet we did see a pretty significant increase in performance. Again, what are we seeing here? I think the one thing is, is the big issue is the increased number of passives. So there's, there's people that are just not, they're not getting the wow factor, if you will. They haven't been delighted with the services, and so they're taking the step back. And that's, that's a bit problematic when you, you want to get, you know, range. Again, these are your scores in 2020 versus 1918 and 17. And this is what I said earlier about those different attributes and the scores. Now, I realize this, my goodness gracious, this bar, I, I tried to make this bar chart as large as I could, yet still fit on the screen. All right. You got the law, small town concept and less local justice causes. Refocus on residents, affordable housing, other city safety, noise pollution, city infrastructure, improved racial discrimination, more diversity, reduce crime, the smell, city staff responsiveness, city cleanliness, that kind of ties back into infrastructure. Ease of building, that would get into your planning, enforcement of driving laws, enforced residential codes, and the like. How has the city improved over the last year? Well, we've got 51% of the respondents say it's improved somewhat or significantly, which is a nice, nice figure to look at here.
John, do you know how that compares to previous years?
I know I have the data, but I don't know.
That's okay, that's okay, maybe you could file with Barbara and send it to council.
Yeah, I can, I have all that data, so I can send it.
Okay.
And that, that is it. Was there anything you wanted me to go back to?
No, I think, I, a quick comment for me, and then I can't see the council members again, so if you could close the presentation, that would be really helpful. And then if we have to reopen it, we can, once I see hands go up. But the, to your point about a workshop earlier, Mr. Dickey and Barbara, I think, you know, for your group or the city manager, when I think about the vision and the responsiveness of city council, to me, that's another good one to dive into if we know who the participants are, and to Mr. Dickey's point, if we're sensitive to, you know, the, the nature, even though it was not anonymous, but that we could reach out to those folks and dig into that a little bit more too. Because that one does tend to continue to show up for us. Yeah, Councilman Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dickey, I would love to see all the different variations of the statements that got funneled into the, lost the small town concept. I'm sure those were not the exact words that all 15% of those defectors used. I would just be curious, you know, Mr. Mayor, talking about diving in, like, I think the, the words used may be very helpful for us as a council to understand. You know, it's not something that I think comes out of left field for me, I'm glad it's being stated, I'm glad it's in a report that we are going to file, because as town evolves, there are definitely some of that small town feel that potentially could be lost. And so I personally would love to see those, those exact words. If, if that can be extrapolated from the, from the surveys and shared with us as council, I, I would really love to have that.
That's a great point. Yeah, the other one that I don't remember being on before as significantly was affordable housing. But I can't recall exactly, I know it's come up in the past, but it doesn't, I don't think it's to the extent that we see now, so it's, it's good that we actually have a couple projects underway, one specifically to interview, select, and engage a housing developing company to help us achieve some of those goals. So that, that, that's great. Mayor Protem, I feel like you had your hand up, or about to.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to echo Councilmember Nicole's comment. I think it's, it is, on the one hand, instinctive to see questions about the small town feel. And say, well, in a year where we didn't get to do any of the things that are very small towny, is that, you know, does that take away from those sort of emotive moments? But if there's specific things in there, because in my mind, of course, naturally I want to exonerate us and say, it's all well, this is an anomalous year. But are there, are there moments in there that, or was specific verbiage about things that we can or should be addressing? And, and similar to the last one, you know, vision of city council and responsiveness of city council can be two different things that sort of have in one category. Are we not being responsive, or are we being responsive and our vision is bad? Those would be two, two very different things to drill into, and I suspect that, that goes over to Barbara for follow-up action, if that's what we're delineating it. But I think we'd be very curious to see if, if, if there's things in there again that, that we need to reevaluate and look at in terms of our residents.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Barbara, please, yeah.
Mayor Protem, I, yes, and, and Councilmember Nicole, those are two things that we can put together and kind of pull out of the data for you to give you a clearer picture of those items. So we'll take that as an action item, follow up on.
Thank you. Did, oh, one last question, Mr. Dickey, did anybody mention poor internet service?
Um, well, I, I happen to be on the raw data, just, just so happens. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a quick find.
I know I personally do not respond to this survey.
I see, I, okay, hold on a second, one comment, one person said it. Poor internet by internet providers.
Is that the residential?
All I needed.
Is that residential?
That was in the residential.
I think Mr. Nicole's probably referring to the business, but maybe not.
Okay, hold on a second.
You weren't, okay, you weren't, okay, sorry.
I would suggest that indicates people are not filling out this survey between the hours of 8:15 and 2:15 in the day when the internet is being flooded by Zoom school.
Oh my goodness, I don't even want to get into that.
I think we're good, any further comments or questions? No, it doesn't look like it. Thank you, Barbara, thank you, Mr. Dickey.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have council consensus to receive and file? I'm sorry, hold on, let me, wrong item. Yeah, no, do we have council consensus to receive and file the report related to MPS? Anyone opposed? Looks like we do. Okay, moving on, thank you. Item seven, city broadband discussion recommendation, this is also receiving file, Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this item?
Bear with me. This will be Charles Mallory, our IT Director.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council for giving us the opportunity to present today and, and discuss this very important topic as it relates to high-speed broadband. Thank you, Mr. Nicole, for kind of teeing that up for us. So, you, you know, first of all, I would want to say that it's absolutely understood that high-speed broadband in the city of El Segundo is a challenge, right? It's a challenge for small businesses, it's a challenge for residents, and we absolutely recognize that it is a challenge. So part of today's discussion is to start to talk about that. You know, maybe look at solutions, but ultimately open it up for Q and A with respect to those challenges. Some of the providers, or the providers that we have on the call today are all of the major players as it relates to AT&amp;T, represented, representation from Spectrum as well as Verizon, and then we have representation from American Dark Fiber as well. So, you know, with that said, what I will do is I will introduce them, give them a couple minutes, minutes or so to give their presentation. And then ultimately, we will open this up for Q and A and full discussion, and then figure out where we go from there. Okay? Okay, with that said, let's go ahead and start with John, AT&amp;T. John, why don't you introduce yourself as well as your team members and your team members on the line? And, and then we'll go to the next provider, thank you.
Well, thank you, Charles, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and city staff, John Effernan with External Affairs at AT&amp;T. And I'm a one-man show, so just me tonight, so a short, short introduction for myself. Do you want to, do you want me to wrap with introduction or go into the presentation?
You're already there, John, go ahead and go jump into the presentation, be perfect.
Okay, so I'm assuming that if I just jump to my files, that'll, my screen will be shared, or do I need to click on something?
You, you have to click on the share screen with the bottom, the green button.
Okay. So, you know, in the conversation with, with City Manager Mitnick and, and Charles regarding the network, it felt like it was appropriate to give an overview, basically of the, you know, where, where El Segundo has been, and where El Segundo is going when it comes to our wireline network architecture. And just a quick reminder, AT&amp;T is a, is a large dynamic company. Our mission is to connect folks and to entertain folks. So we have, we have a whole business unit dedicated to connecting folks, whether that's our wireline, internet connectivity, or wireless. We have a whole team of folks dedicated to our, our business customers. We have a, a small army dedicated to what we call the public sector. So those are those government agencies and entities and schools and libraries and universities, as well as, as a big team focused solely on continuing to maintain as well as upgrade our network. And then you may have, may have heard in recent years, we, you know, we got into the TV business and welcoming DirecTV to the family and, and more recently Time Warner. So not to be confused with the old Time Warner Cable, this was Time Warner, like Warner Brothers Movie Studios and HBO and CNN and, and all the Turner Broadcasting properties. So a lot happening at AT&amp;T, we are definitely no longer your, you know, your grandfather's phone company. But the slide I have up is, just gives a, a quick recap of how.
Hey, John, John, we don't see, we don't see any, there's no slide up right now.
Yeah, hit share, John, at the bottom of your screen, there should be a share screen, and that.
Clicked on that before going, let me try it again, and it brings me to a, a second screen, and let's see if this works. Are you seeing that?
There we go.
Okay. So if, if everyone can see that, I'll go ahead and launch in to the, kind of the history of our wireline network architecture. You know, for the last 140 years, we've been connecting folks originally via twisted copper pairs, right? From our central offices along the utility poles to people's homes. And then about 20 years ago, we launched our service called DSL. And that's where we brought fiber into the central offices. But still, there was the, the copper connection going to people's homes. So what initially was a, a mission to provide dial tone and voice connectivity with DSL, you know, there was, that's when internet access and surfing the web and, and really the launch of, of the internet as we know it came into play. I mentioned getting into the TV business. We had a product called U-verse where we, we had from the, what, what we call the V-RAD, which was the video relay access terminal, those new cabinets that were placed in the right of way to help deliver that video signal that went to the residents of El Segundo riding over copper for that last, last portion. And then most recently, and you'll see the date there of 2013, our AT&amp;T fiber launch specifically for new developments, so brand-new homes, brand-new communities. We would partner with developers and bring fiber directly to the home. The good thing is that in the last year, there has been a, a launch of a, of an initiative to bring fiber to the homes in those mature, developed communities like El Segundo. So we will, we'll be looking for permits to pull additional fiber along the utility poles and have a, an access point, or what you see there is titled a PFP. And that will ultimately bring fiber to the individual homes. And separate from what we typically see in a business customer setting, where in a business park or a large industrial space where we can, we can trench or use existing conduit to pull to a business customer, this, this newest initiative will use existing aerial connections with a small, a small piece of cabinetry, if you will, and about the size of a dorm refrigerator to house that fiber at a neighborhood hub. So that's, that's the latest initiative from AT&amp;T to bring fiber to the home.
Okay, thank you, John. Mayor Boyle, City Council, if you guys can bear with us, I'll let everyone give an introduction, then we'll open that up for questions. So next, we have Spectrum, and Stephen, can you introduce yourself and team from Spectrum?
Charles, thank you very much. I'm Stephen Sawyer, Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications. I brought with me this evening some of my team from the Spectrum Enterprise Small and Medium-Sized Business Team to talk more specifically about the network. As I spoke with Charles, first off, I want to say thank you very much for inviting us to be part of this discussion and continue a discussion that we started, I think, over two and a half years ago when, at the time, our senior director and I met with a city manager and the assistant city manager, and also I think Barbara, who at that time was the Economic Development Director, to talk about specific areas of the city such as the Smoky Hollow area that was needing of high-speed broadband services. So I'm very happy to continue that conversation. And just to let you know that as many of you know, that our, our network is built as part of a hybrid fiber coax network that is scalable to increased speeds with minimal impact. that is scalable to increased speeds with minimal impact to the infrastructure and to customers. So we have raised our speeds over the last several years, and many of you may know that, you know, El Segundo is a one-gig city right now. We were deployed throughout the residential areas. And back in 2018, we upgraded our network to provide up to one gig service for customers. Now that's much more than people need. So depending on the individual needs of customers, you know, our standard entry speed is 200 megs. We also have a 400 meg product. And then, of course, the, the one gig service. So with that said, I'll just turn over and let my teammates introduce themselves and talk a little bit more about this, the, the, the business side of the, our services. Gail, I don't know if you want to go, or Jim?
Sure. Thanks, Stephen. And thanks for, thanks for having us here today. My name is James Farbola. I'm the Senior Director for Small and Media Business Sales at Spectrum Business. At Spectrum, we have a full portfolio of, of services that we provide to the citizens of El Segundo, the small businesses of El Segundo. We break down our, our, our sales segments, segments, much the same way John was speaking about at AT&amp;T, right? We have a enterprise segment, a small and medium business segment, a residential segment, and then a government relation or government local, small and local government section. So our service, the services that we provide in El Segundo, Stephen mentioned most of them, we have both our hybrid fiber connections, which is, which has a starting speed of 200 meg and scales up to a gig. But we also have our on-demand fiber services available in El Segundo as well. So we pulled fiber through much of El Segundo, and we can reach most businesses with most small and medium businesses with our, our hybrid fiber coax network. If an individual business per se wants a larger scalable fiber connection up to 100 gig, that is available, we would probably, we, in most scenarios, we would have to build our fiber to the premise at that point in time. We work with the city and our construction teams to do this. So but all of those services are available. If there, we also have a mechanism for, for businesses that don't have access to our fiber or coax services at this point in time, where if we gain interest in a community, in many cases, Spectrum will forego any build costs to the consumer, not all cases, but in, in many cases, forego the cost to either the, the small or medium business and put together an internal return on investment model, which allows us to provide services at the same price across the board, whether you have our services built into your location or, or don't at this point in time. So.
Stephen and James, thank you, guys. I appreciate that quick overview. We have two more. We have Michelle from Verizon. You're muted, Michelle. There we go. We can't hear you, Michelle. Okay, let's do this. Michelle, I'll come back to you. I'll move on to American Dark Fiber and we'll come back to you, see if we can figure out what's, what's going on with your mic. Okay, we you there? All right, we have Dave from American Dark Fiber. Dave, if you can give us just a brief presentation because we, at some point, we want to open this up for Q and A, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, guests, and fellow carriers. It's an honor to be here. I appreciate you inviting us. And let me tell you a little bit about who American Dark Fiber is and what we do in the marketplace.
Dave, can you expand the view so that we can see only the presentation?
Let's see here. How is that? Does that help?
It's the same. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, sorry. I'll make this available to you, Charles, in case you need it. It's pretty rudimentary. But I'll be happy to provide it. American Dark Fiber, we are what is called a CLEC here in the state of California and throughout the United States. By virtue of the Telecom Act of 1996, a new class of carrier was developed, if you will, called a CLEC. The CLEC stands for a Competitive Local Exchange Carrier. And here in California, we are a defined telecom utility. And really what that means is we have the right to develop new telecom network in the public right-of-way. Our company name is rather unusual to, to a lot of folks. It's American Dark Fiber. It really, it's quite simple, the way we view the world. We provide dark fiber services. Dark fiber, for those of you that don't know it, is simply the unlit fiber in a fiber optic cable. This is a fiber optic cable. In this particular example, there's 864 strands of fiber. And what we do is we provide that unbundled network strands to those that need it. We've had the, the pleasure and the benefit of working with every one of the carriers you have assembled here tonight. We view ourselves as the Switzerland of the telecom community. We provide the rudimentary infrastructure that goes underneath a lot of the applications everybody wants to utilize today, whether it's Zoom or storage or real-time video conferencing, cloud-based applications, you name it. We don't get involved in any of that, quite frankly. But what we do is we partner or we open up the marketplace to those that do. And as our friends at Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Spectrum will tell you, to develop rudimentary infrastructure, the fiber optic infrastructure in the public right-of-way is a very expensive proposition, particularly here in the greater Los Angeles area. It can cost anywhere from $75,000 up to $250,000 per mile to deploy a fiber optic cable. It's all based on the type of deployment, whether it's an aerial deployment or some trenching. But regardless, that's a lot of money on a per-mile basis. So what we try to do is open up the network, find pockets of need where the, the bigger folks perhaps have not upgraded their networks as of yet. We can come in as a local provider. We're based here in Los Angeles. We understand the permitting, the engineering, and the cost dynamics associated with deployments. And we look to aggregate the needs. So we provide the supply that others can use to satisfy their demand, whether it be the cable operator that doesn't have fiber in certain areas or a wireless internet service provider that wants to have fiber to their hub. So we, we've built for just about every type of carrier here in Southern California. We provide these private network solutions. And what's really interesting about El Segundo is the fact that you're home to a hub of world-class data centers. Those are the type of data, or locations, rather, the data centers are where the, the applications at a worldwide level reside, and they reside at a wholesale, in a wholesale manner. And so to the extent that the carriers, and I, I think every one of us that is assembled here today provides connectivity to these data centers, but it's critical to know that because when a customer has certain needs of, you know, whether it's a cloud-based application or just, you know, storing their own transactional data in servers that are in a co-location facility, having that in your backyard can save the customer a tremendous amount of money. And so it's really important that you know that. So in, in our world with American Dark Fiber, what we try to do is isolate not just the capacity demand that's needed, but where should it go? And so we work with cities. We, we've done a variety of developments throughout California. Most recently, we've completed our development of the South Bay Fiber Network, which I'll go to the next slide if you can see it. And it'll give you an idea of where that network resides. And El Segundo is a key component of that. The network itself is about a hundred-mile network that was developed over the last two years. It's dark fiber in nature. We partnered with a, a lit service provider by the name of Race Communications to provide the lit services on top of it. But as the underlying developer, we put together the dark fiber network that you see in the graphic on the left. The graphic on the right is a more zoomed view of where the network goes in El Segundo. I've highlighted the city so you can see it. And in the area that's east of Pacific Coast Highway is where those data centers that I just referred to exist. And the connectivity between that corridor and the downtown Los Angeles corridor allows for worldwide capacity to be delivered very cost-effectively into El Segundo. The trick becomes that last mile or the last hundred feet in many cases. And so what we're working with the South Bay Cities Council Governments to do and with the city itself is to find these pockets where we can deploy through private investment, new network that satisfies more broadband uses for customers that state that they need it. And we want to be in a position, we've done a tremendous amount of development work in the wireless world, meaning what we did was we developed fiber optic cables to the wireless hub nodes or cell towers. And with the emergence of 5G, that's going to go deeper and deeper into the community. So whether it's just rudimentary cellphone coverage or new 5G capacity, where these pipes are matter. And the ability to jump off of the main pipes and spring deeper into the community will allow faster speeds to exist in El Segundo. And with that, I'll, I'll shut up and let Charles take over from here.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Thank you. We appreciate that. Let's go back to Verizon and Michelle. And again, City Council, thank you. I, I just thought this was important to provide a bit of context, and we will open it up shortly for questions and answers. Dave, can you kill your share screen, please?
Bet, you bet. Let me see how best to do that. Sorry.
There we go. Good evening.
How's that?
Can you hear me this time?
Yes, you can, Michelle. Thank you.
Awesome. Sorry about that, you guys. I was using computer audio and apparently it just wasn't connecting. I could hear you all fine. And I want to first thank, thank you all for inviting Verizon to be with us, will be with you today to discuss the importance of connectivity. We greatly appreciate our relationship with the city and providing service to your constituents and our customers. I'm interested to hear what the council has tonight. We'll take that back to our network team to determine the feasibility and potential solutions that we can provide. We definitely look forward to continuing this discussion and moving forward together. So again, thank you guys so much. I apologize for the technical difficulties, but look forward to working with you all.
Okay, Council, that concludes the introductions and, you know, brief background. Again, I thought, I just thought that was important that we give a little context, more than willing to open this up for any questions that you may have.
Councilman Nickel, please, and then Mayor Pro Tim after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charles, thank you for gathering all of these individuals from the various providers. All the while, while everyone was introducing themselves besides American Dark Fiber, I just kept thinking to myself, I'm pretty sure where I live, I only have access to one of the three providers. And I guess a general question that I wanted to ask of all the providers is, is it typical within a given jurisdiction or area or zip code city that, you know, Spectrum only services a portion of the city, Verizon only services another portion of the city, and, you know, AT&amp;T is only available for another portion of the city? You know, is that typical? Or are we living in the Stone Age here? This is Steve from Spectrum. With regards to our service, we were deployed completely throughout the entire city. There may be pockets where, for whatever reason, maybe a, an issue with a right-of-entry agreement not being signed by a property owner that we've not been able to serve, you know, maybe a multi-dwelling unit or a mobile home park, but for all intents purposes, were deployed throughout the, the city with the exception of some of the, the, the small and business areas. Because we were built on the backbone of the, the residential cable TV system. And so. You're running through coax cable, correct? It's a fiber coax, our, our backbone is, is fiber. And then the last hundred feet or, you know, the last distance into homes is coax. But the, the network is designed in such a way that it can be scalable, you know, right now up to one gig per customer. And, you know, we're working on eventually getting to 10 gig in the not-too-distant future.
Hi, Stephen. This is Jim Farbola. I think what he was asking was, are there multiple a specific address? Can, can a, a business or a, a consumer get multiple carriers? And, and the answer in, in El Segundo is yes. The, the ILEC in El Segundo is, is AT&amp;T, and the cable provider is, is Spectrum Business. And then you, you could be serviced also by a CLEC such as Mr. Daigle, who was just speaking. So there, I'm not sure that they're all ubiquitous at, at every address. And we are, we're not at every address, as Stephen alluded to, but, but 90-plus percent of the addresses are usually serviced by at least two carriers.
Yeah, if I could, I'll chime in. Councilmember Nickel, thanks for the question. So, yeah, I think it's important, what, what Jim was saying, to draw the distinction between the incumbent telecom provider. So in the South Bay, it's either AT&amp;T or now Frontier, what used to be Verizon. When we're talking about the wireline network for the telecom provider. And then we have our partner, industry partners, the cable companies. So for El Segundo, that's, that's Spectrum under, under Charter. And then the third kind of flavor of broadband connectivity, as you mentioned in your question, and we have Barbara on of Verizon, just like AT&amp;T, just like T-Mobile, provide more and more high-speed connectivity wirelessly. So it's a fiber backbone to those what initially were macro cell sites and then were larger sites, but up on top of commercial buildings or inside church steeples. And now you're seeing smaller and smaller antennas in the right-of-way on streetlights or, or utility poles. So connectivity options come in, come in three flavors for the residents.
Got it. Mr. Mayor, I'll have more questions later, but you can move on to someone else.
Thank you, Councilman. I take Mayor Pro Tim, you had your comment up, question, hand up, and then we'll go to Councilmember Drew after that.
This, this may be a bit too round-tabley, but, but I think that what drives many of us here is we have a mix of residents and businesses all clamoring for more high-speed access. And I think that what we look to is what's the best way to do that? We prefer to be a last hundred-foot connection. And if the industry is pointed toward wireless 5G and not wired connections, then that guides some of our infrastructure decisions. Similarly, if there's a new administration that imposes net neutrality constraints, does that affect your appetite to put in utility-level fixtures for residential users? Those are considerations that we have to make. So I'm not certain whom this question is for. And some of this may steep heavily into business decisions that you are making. But from our end, it would be interesting to hear some perspectives on whether the future is wireless when it comes to residential and small business connection, or if we should be looking at ways to try and expand our wired access.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Pimentel, I'm happy to take that one on first. So really, AT&amp;T is committed on both fronts. I think years, we were playing wireless side with the launch of the, you know, right, the smartphone. What went from a successful net wireless network where you no longer had dropped calls? Now it's, can you stream video without any buffering and is that interaction seamlessly? Like, can you take a Zoom call on your phone sitting in a parking lot? So the, the network demand has, has increased exponentially and, and the wireless carriers, we were desperately playing catch-up. And I think we now met that, met that demand, and we're building for future demand with the launch of 5G. But on the wireline side, on fiber deployment side, AT&amp;T is absolutely committed, obviously for our business customers. But like I mentioned earlier, while I was chatting through my slide, a, a new, uh, initiative, our integrated fiber build, where we will be pushing, you know, and each, each generation or iteration of our network upgrade is more about pushing fiber closer and closer to the residents. It was easy to do and it was a, a new community out in Santa Clarita or, uh, in the inland empire where we could partner with, um, a developer before the streets were, were down and get fiber to every home. But for cities like El Segundo, from what I've been told, in 2021, there are six specific projects that will deliver fiber, uh, to over a thousand homes within El Segundo. That's over and above those that already have sufficient, uh, capacity.
Mr. Mayor-
Thank you.
Uh, this is David Daigle here. Uh, I, I'd like to echo, uh, what I just heard, uh, and, and perhaps give you a different view slightly that could help. And I think the, the, the answer is that, uh, both, uh, technologies are critical in a go-forward, uh, manner. And I say that for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, uh, to have multiple types of infrastructure that permeates and fully, uh, blankets the city is, is the ultimate goal. And to do so in a cost-effective manner in terms of the services provided for the users. To get there, uh, fibers, I mentioned earlier, is quite expensive to deploy. And, uh, uh, you know, our friends at AT&amp;T, uh, Spectrum and Verizon, they, they know this probably as well, or if not better than I do. And so, uh, when you have a wireless provider, whether it's a, a 4G technology coming from a macro cell site or a 5G street-level antenna or a wireless internet service provider that's got a rooftop, so long as the bandwidth can be delivered to the customer, uh, I think the customer won't care so much so long as the price point is there and the quality of service is there. And what we've seen in the wireless arena over the last 10, 12, 15 years is the emergence of millimeter-wave radio, which allows for very high-speed capacity to be delivered. And a lot of folks would probably look at me saying, hey, what are you doing? You're cutting yourself off the knees in terms of your business. Well, the fact of the matter is, the more users means more business. And I think that applies to everybody on this call from the carrier perspective. So from my view, if we can support wireless connections as well as deliver more fiber throughout the city and other cities like El Segundo and the region, at the end of the day, the user benefits. And I think based on what I've heard and what I've seen with Spectrum, AT&amp;T and Verizon, and I know what we do in the marketplace, it is changing. It just, it doesn't change overnight. It takes a lot of time to get the permits, schedule the construction. And then, of course, there's certain times of the years, particularly if you're a beach city, the way you folks are, where you don't want those streets close to the beach being dug up in the middle of summer. So there's other considerations that come into play, but I think the answer is simply this, it's both technologies.
Thanks, Dave. Um, Councilor Drew.
All right, yeah, hi. I'm gonna kind of preface this by saying that I am not necessarily a major tech-savvy person. I'm also gonna probably say that out of our residents, probably about 1% of people are really understanding everything that you're saying. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I'm just real bad at sugarcoating stuff. So a couple of things that have come up in these conversations and since you guys started, I've heard, you know, El Segundo is an affluent community. I mean, we're, we're talking about million-dollar teardowns right now, okay? On 6,000-square-foot lots. So we're not a community that is not investing in itself. Okay, there's some expectations from businesses and residents who live here when you buy and pay that much money for the services to be of the same level. Um, AT&amp;T, your headquarters is here. Um, I heard from Spectrum, you mentioned about one gigabyte, which is much more than is needed from a residential standpoint. Um, I heard, I think it was from Dark Fiber Worldwide Data Centers, available in El Segundo, okay? I hear fiber everywhere. So here's my question. Why is it still so bad? I mean, I'm telling you right now, it, it's bad. It, there's no other way to put it. It's bad. For what you're, the what you're telling me, we should be unbelievable right now, but we're not. We're bad. So what's the timeline to fix the issues? That's the major thing. I think anybody who's listening to this, they want to know what's that timeline? Because right now, what's happening in the, in the city is, I, I don't think it's getting better. I think the amount of complaints I see through our community networks is probably a hundredfold over last year at this time. So sorry to be blunt, but unfortunately, that's the way I am. You guys are here. What's the solution?
Well, Councilmember, I can't speak for, for the larger folks, but, uh, anyone that wants some fiber service, we'll have somebody out there within a week to look at their property. I can tell you that.
And Councilman, this is Gail Codom. I'm with Spectrum. I work with Jim and Stephen. And I guess we'd want to get to, when you say it's bad, is it speed that's bad? Or quality of service? Or the fact that you can't get spectrum everywhere, um, all the ti- at every, uh, residence?
Check, check, check.
Okay. Um, I would say we build-
Gail, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you this. My wife in the background, you guys can't hear, but I can. She's been making sure that my kids are not on their iPads or trying to do anything on the internet while I am on this meeting with you guys, so that my video does not get affected.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's what it's come to in my household. And, you know, and, and I am a Spectrum user because I, that's my option. Um, when, when we moved into this house, there was not Spectrum connectivity. When my house got connected to the node, I think the person on the phone described it, five of my neighbors lost their connection for a week. It was almost like the node was overrun. And so it was, th- it, this has been challenging. This is, I'm one of the two councilmembers that's been chewing on Charles's ear to get this item on the agenda so that we can have this discussion. So to Councilmember Giroux's point, i- it's bad. It's just not good. So we want to, we need to know why and what we can do.
Well, we have, you know, an entire, we, we have what's called the rock. And they're in, in, uh, every region and division. And Debbie Piccolo is our, um, regional, or, or Senior Vice President of, um, Operations here in Southern California. It, it, I would say this, number one, we would want to address node issues and node contention, con- contention that causes speed degradation to any resident. Uh, and we do have a entire team that reviews that. Um, we also have a, an escalation team out of our corporate office where we'll review anything like that, um, where we have a specific area where we do have potential node issues, which is causing, um, slower speeds, where we have an over, a node that's overcapacity. So I would say, if you get, are you getting complaints that we can document? That we can, like, I can go to you, Scott, and say, yes, can I get your address and we're gonna review this? Absolutely. And we'll look at the node degradation, if there is any, and then also review. And we can't do that customer by customer, but, um, we could certainly look at it node by node and see areas where-
Yeah, Gail, no, I totally understand. And, and the customer service from your company is, is top-notch. I think what Councilmember Giroux kind of went straight at is the, the little anecdotal story that I shared with you about my personal experience is an indication that the infrastructure itself maybe can no longer handle the abundance of customers that are putting a high demand on that infrastructure. And so we, like, I, for me, I, I'm at a point as a, as a civic leader that I want to look at internet being provided to every household is as important as, you know, our water system and our sewer line. And, you know, we have, we have accounts that we save money and we constantly work on this infrastructure to keep this infrastructure in place. And there's nothing in place for high-speed internet. Now, high-speed internet, 20 years ago, it wasn't what it is today. It's everything today. For the next calendar year, many of the people that live in this town are gonna be working from home and their kids may not go back to school till the fall. And so it's just, this infrastructure has been put at the forefront. And, you know, if we're looking at, uh, you know, strategic planning and budgeting, we need to understand, not like, hey, what customer service options we have, but what is the plan moving forward? Are we just gonna keep working along this same dated infrastructure? Or to, you know, AT&amp;T, you know, Mr. Heffernan, Heffernan's point of, you know, they're gonna try to bring fiber to each house, but is that actually going to happen?
I would say this, Charter has a robust network and our fiber network will facilitate high speeds. Um, it might be worthwhile, and I, I, I would say this is that if we could have, it could be all of your, all of the people on the phone from the different providers, but present, um, uh, our networks and, and show you where our growth is. And then the opportunity to, let's say, increase speed and potentially get to every homeowner in the marketplace. Jim, I think I interrupted you.
All right, so, so I just wanted to, I'm gonna say one more thing and then I'm gonna, I'll stop. I only got one more, one more bullet left in the gun. All right? So at the end of the day, uh, and John, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pick on you because you guys have a huge office here, right? At the end of the day, each El Segundo resident and each small business want the same internet service and speed that the AT&amp;T employees get at their El Segundo facility. That's the goal. Now we just gotta figure out how to get there.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that. And I think Scott touched on it. As I was mentioning, the smartphone revolution and how consumer behavior drove, um, demand to peak levels never seen before. I think this, you know, the pandemic and what we're living through over the last year. I mean, it feels like, feels like just, uh, not too long ago, we were all at 777 for last year's State of the City. And I think it was, you know, with the big jugs of, of hand sanitizer and, and who knew that, that days later, uh, shutdown was happening. But, but to your point, um, you know, the, the expectation and the demand is there. Uh, but what, what was mentioned earlier was, uh, intense investment and then time to, to design, engineer, and then permit and construct those upgrades. Uh, that's why I was pleasantly surprised. And I know it's not every resident, you know, next month, but it is six neighborhoods or clusters, we call them distribution areas. Um, six that have already been identified for this year. And I'm gonna lobby to increase that number and it's gonna be the same in 2022. So it is a, it kind of a growing, uh, trend for fiber upgrades. We're doing it, you know, across the country.
Yeah, and this is- If I could just chime in real quickly, uh, with regards to the issues that have been raised and brought to the city's attention from customers, uh, is that communicated through the city manager's office? Or they can talk, because I've not heard of these complaints. And usually I'm copied on the complaints that come through. So, you know, there could be a myriad of reasons for different issues that customers are experiencing, such as node contention that Gail mentioned and, uh, the issue at your house, um, Councilmember Nickel, about, you know, the capacity. And so a- as soon as we know about those issues, we can go out and look at the network and see what's going on. Cause as I hear this discussion, I hear two issues. One is the, the quality of the current infrastructure now and making sure that that's up to snuff and delivering the services that everybody expects. And then the other issue is building out new infrastructure, the, the new areas. So I, I'll follow up with Charles and, and the city staff to work out a, a means to address these issues as they're brought to the city's attention so that we can get the right folks on our network, people, uh, looking at what the cause is and whether or not it's splitting a node to alleviate the node congestion, um, or something else that's happening that may be at the, the premise or the customer's home, that's the issue. But again, um, I'd like to know what these issues are so that we can address them specifically.
Mr. Sorkas, just one quick question for you and for Mr. Heffernan and probably Ms. Brower and Mr. Daigle as well. I, I gotta believe, like, when we have Edison on, we had major issues with reliability of the Edison network, which is our sole utility provider for electricity in our city. Started several years ago. We started asking them questions. We asked them to come and present. We looked at how they were prioritizing their infrastructure enhancements throughout all the different circuits that we have in the residential and business community throughout El Segundo. And they had to go back to their, their board or whomever to get the, the, the resources they need to prioritize El Segundo circuits. I guess my question for you is, surely you have diagnostics onboard? I mean, 30 years ago, I was working on a 14 that diagnosed themselves as aircraft. And when I call into Spectrum or anyone else, you guys are looking at the, the, say, the broadband service I have available at that point in time. Aren't there benchmarks that you're looking at that give your organization's indication of the level of service we're getting, the downtime, the latency, et cetera, without, without getting that anecdotal information from customers? And I guess that's what I'd be looking for is, give us an overview of systemically how you're providing a level of service to the client so that we can come back and say, okay, great. Now what are you gonna do for the next quarter or next year? To your point, Mr. Heffernan, about infrastructure enhancements, that's the level of information I think that we need rather than dealing with one-off anecdotal situations with our residents and businesses is, overall, how does the network look? Where are the opportunities? And, um, you know, providing us that information and then working together to prioritize enhancements, either using American Dark Fiber and leveraging what's already been done with the South Bay Fiber Ring, which is a great program. Thank you to the Metro for giving us funds to even make that happen. Whatever it is, let's work together once we understand the bigger picture of how we're doing versus this customer's having an issue and that customer's having an issue. Um, uh, be- because we keep hearing that from businesses, by the way, that, like in Smoky Hollow, for example, where I own a commercial property, you know, the service is dismal. You cannot get what you want in terms of broadband service. So let, let's see, is that factual or not? But it'd be good to know from, from you guys, the providers.
Yeah, we do have diagnostic tools and we are monitoring the system. As Gail mentioned, our Rock, which is our regional operating center, uh, monitors the network uh, to pinpoint those kind of issues as, you know, hopefully before they occur, um, with regards to node contention and latency. Uh, so I'll follow up with our network folks and get back to city staff and let them know what we can do.
That's great. Thank you. John, do you have something similar in place where, with your organization?
Yeah, Mayor Boyle, so, so I'm happy to, to continue the conversation with Charles and with City Manager Mittnick. You know, just a reminder, you know, of respect and, and, and recognize the great work and of, of my industry partners, but it's a real competitive marketplace out there. So, so when we do share about, um, a renewed capital commitment and that planned investment, um, you know, we just, we have to be, um, we have to be careful about how that's shared and when it's shared. But happy to, happy to get together at the right time and to share specifics, obviously in a public forum um, and public records, once we submit for a permit, you know, that's, that's public. Uh, like, but there are plans in place to upgrade. Uh, now, the, the one thing I would say is that there's, there's, I'm not an engineer, uh, but I, I think there's been more emphasis in recent years on monitoring the diagnostics around our wireless network and where there are pockets and where there are underserved areas as we look to densify or, you know, to fill those gaps. So there's probably similar, similar, um, analysis and diagnostics around our wired network. And regarding Smoky Hollow, uh, I could definitely reach out and, and, and get on a follow-up call with, with Charles or whoever at staff, Public Works, Elias, to talk about where our existing fiber kind of root is. So if you think about the tree, you know, we've got the trunks out there, we've got large branches. But to deliver that fiber to the small individual business, uh, locations, sometimes that's a, that's a customer order that's required to provision that, that service. Uh, because the initial outlay, like I put in that simple slide, is really to deliver copper to every business and every home. And bringing fiber is, is often triggered by, by a customer order.
Thank you. Um, and I, I know Chris, Mr. Mittnick has his hand up. Just in fairness, uh, Ms. Brower and Mr. Daigle, anything to add on this topic or should we move on to City, City Manager?
I'm, I'm okay. Uh, we're at your disposal. If you'd like to come in and, and have a, uh, economic or business development, uh, a type meeting on network deployment, we'd, we'd be happy to do so.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Brower?
And same here. Um, you know, I'm taking notes of all the concerns raised tonight. I'll be bringing this back to our team. And then we are definitely open to meeting in person with you guys to, um, discuss, you know, future.
Great, thank you then. Okay, Scott, Mr. Mallory is raising his hand pretty urgently, so let's put a Charles on, Scott.
If you want to close, but I, I do want to say that this is, there's no silver bullet for this. Uh, it's a multi-faceted problem and it's, it's going to take, uh, working with all of the people that are here on this phone to, to provide that solution. And, so we're, I am dedicated to doing that and, and improving the service for the city. So we'll continue that effort.
Thanks, Charles. Thank you for pulling us together. Mr. Mittnick, anything to add?
Um, may I go after the council members out of respect?
I, yeah, I think, I think, does any other council member, everyone, yeah, Councilor first up and then Mayor Proton after that, yeah.
So, um, you know, to, I, I, I like the idea of doing the diagnosis. If we could get a, like, report, like, on a bi-monthly basis, until we see, you know, to see improvement, if we can get that information, that'd be great. Um, you know, to Mayor Boyle's point, you know, commercial real estate is, you know, it's, it's gonna be a challenging market right now and we already have people saying that they can't move into the Smoky Hollow area, because of the bad, um, of the bad uh, internet. So I just really wanna make sure we focus on areas that, you know, business, business revenue is very important to us and we need to ensure that our business locations like Smoky Hollow, has the internet capacity to uh, be successful. And I do know, like, for instance, we had, you know, we have some big uh, customers that are big, big businesses like tech, uh, textile that rely upon high internet speed. And so they're, you know, they, they're building additional space in El Segundo, but they need the expanded services from the internet. So it's important for us to uh, ensure that our businesses have the right capacity so that we can be successful in the long run.
Hey, Councilor Prost, Mayor Proton?
Uh, just o- o- one more thing from, from me on this and this is a bit of, with an understanding that this is a competitive commercial environment a- and not a utility, although we tend to treat you like one. Uh, we are sensitive to the fact that there are things that you likely need from us to bring these projects to fruition. Uh, we have an acute interest in having high internet capacity, both residentially and for our businesses. We, I think, are all very conscious in, in the last year has given us a front row seat to how quickly that demand will increase. And as gaming and all of these things increase online, that it's, it's likely on, only going to oversubscribe further. If you need things from us, if you want to coordinate what streets need to be torn up, we have a robust program on resurfacing streets. I think we would be very happy to coordinate that. But there's things that, that are, in your competitive environment, we understand that there's some confidentiality for that. But if you need to broach infrastructure solutions with us, we just sat here as a bunch of what looks to me like five English majors, and sat around and talked through uh, a series of five G tower minimum standards, and nodded our heads like we were astrophysicists. So I, I say, we will put the legwork in for this if, if you provide us the grist for the mill. So please be conscious and aggressive that we are sensitive to it's a competitive environment, but we, we are here, ready, ready and willing to support the infrastructure demands and the public right-of-way pieces that need to go into this.
Good, thank you. Mr. Mittnick, I think that's it for council member comments.
Right, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, thank you for pushing us to put this on the agenda. This has been a good dialogue tonight. Had a lot of information, a lot of very detailed information. And I, I'd like to just provide some um, observations here. Um, there are many cities in Southern California, cities that have greater density than us, cities that have less density. Some are more urban, some are less urban, that have far superior internet service. Uh, and there's a variety of reasons. You can say, those are newer cities, those are older cities. But at the end of the day, this is really um, reflects the, the, the gap between the have and have-not cities with respect to internet service. We are a have-not city, even though we have incredible companies and residents that live here. You've heard that articulated. There's great companies. Well, one of my observations, having been here over a year and a half, is, this is sort of survival of the fittest or survival of the wealthiest and, and whether it's individuals or corporations that are willing to pay the bill to get it. Cause every one of you, every resident, every business, those small businesses in Smoky Hollow, you can have the service. You can get it very quickly. But you have to pay a lot of money to get it. But if you're in a neighboring city or another community, you get it just by, because you're there. So it really is a question of money and priority by these um, utilities. If they want to provide the service and they're, and they can pay for it, we can get it. Now, there are maybe funding options as to how residents and businesses can get it. I wish we as a municipality could do that. We've looked into it. So for the community, the council knows this, I've shared with you. We've, we've talked to our financial advisors to see, is there a way we can do a community facilities district? We're not allowed to do that. So I'd like to ask the utilities, do you have ways internally that you could somehow finance it, uh, with our residents? So Mr. Nickel, on your street, you were told it'd be a thousand dollars or more for you to get fiber to your, your house. Uh, you're muted, I'm sorry.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, or maybe you, you go to your neighbors to get it. Again, I've been in the cities where the utility said, we want the customers, there's a lot of competition. They went in and put the, um, the infrastructure in there. So we'd like to work with AT&T and the others. You know, what you're hearing tonight is a plea. These council members are pretty much begging you on behalf of their residents and their businesses, get us, the connection. We are a job-rich city. We have world-class corporations. Now, if you're beyond me, if you're at AT&T, you will get it because you can pay the hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever it is to get it. But if you're a startup, business going into Smoky Hollow, asking to be, to pay twenty thousand or fifty thousand dollars, that's excessive. If you've just moved here, spent a million and a half dollars on your fixer-upper, and you're told you have to pay twenty thousand dollars, that's a big number. So we're making a plea. Our governing board and the administration, the staff that delivers services to our community, we're, we're pleading with you to do something for our community. And we're willing to work with you. I'll dedicate staff and resources to help you. But I only have a limited number of tools in my toolbox. Uh, so really, that's, it's, it's about a priority. If, if your companies wanna make this a priority, priority, you can do it. And that's our plea. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda tonight. We will follow up and we will provide updates to the council. We will have um, information on our website, so we'll keep the community up to, up to speed. We'll provide information to these individuals, so, our residents know how to get ahold of them. So again, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. Is there anyone opposed to receiving and filing this report?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other comment, but I think Mr. Heffernan had something to say.
No, I was waving goodbye, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Uh, Mr. Sawyer had something, I think.
Oh, no, I was just saying, thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to the, the future conversations with the city.
Thanks, y'all.
Uh, yeah, I'll just, I, I just wanted to kind of close out this agenda item. Um, and this is mostly a discussion, uh, between us council members and, you know, the audience, uh, our residents at home. The concept of, like, fair and equitable, you know, if, you know, depending upon what your address is, should not dictate the level of service you should get in regards to internet. You know, in, like, Mi- uh, Mayor Proton Pimentel said it, he said that we are considering that these companies as utilities, even though it is, not. They are not a utility. This is a service, it's highly competitive and it's an open marketplace. Uh, but I myself would like to think that at some point in my lifetime, internet connectivity to an address is going to be viewed as a utility. It's, it's the first thing. I mean, I, you, all of you know, I am in real estate, this is what I do. People move to town and, it, it's beginning to become a thing. It, how close is that house to the closest, you know, AT&T fiber connectivity? Cause only so many houses in town can have AT&T fiber. And is that adding value to those homes? One could make the argument it is. And, and that's where I think, you know, we spend a lot of time on many different items here at council, talking about property, rights, property values and not, not wanting to, you know, swing the pendulum one way or another to give a certain property, uh, type, you know, an advantage over another. And I see this as, this isn't a, this is a utility. You know, I'm not going as far as saying, hey, council, get behind me and let's invest in our own fiber connectivity and then lease it back, to the providers. That's not what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, we need to make an effort. I don't want this to just be a one-off meeting. I would love there to be follow-up. I would love us to prioritize this uh, during the summer when we, when we do our strategic planning. That this has to be something that we push for, uh, you know, businesses and residents alike. Um, and I just, I know I had shared an anecdotal story about my address and that, that just kind of pushed me over the edge, but this is the whole city. This is the city as, you know, in a whole. So, thank you for letting me stand on my soapbox, Mr. Mayor.
No, not at all, thank you. Okay, any other council comments? Otherwise, I believe we have consensus to receive and file. And it sounds like Scott, you're, you and your staff are gonna take away some action items to address this concern. So, okay. Good, we're moving on. We have consensus. Thank you very much, everybody. Item number eight, report and issue website feature recommendation, receive and file overview of report and issue website feature. Mr. Mittnick, who will report on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, our, our IT Director Charles Mallory will do so and this will be very short and it's an example of how, we follow council's direction to make it easier for our residents and businesses, to um, interact and, and stay engaged with the city with respect to a wide range of, of issues and services. So, uh, Mr. Mallory, a short presentation, let's be sensitive to the lengthy council meeting. Thank you.
Hey, uh, thank you, Scott. Um, basically, what we're gonna do today is just to go over, if you will, what many cities consider to be a three-one-one system. Um, ours is reported issue. Um, what we'll do today, I heard a lot about during the, during the customer service uh, uh, presentation, a lot about compliance handling, responsiveness, and so, things of that nature. I believe that this system will basically give us that ability to, to track the metrics in terms of the requests that are actually coming in, tracking those items and then start to look at trends over months. You know, what happens in the summer, what happens into winter, so forth and so on. So, so with that, I, I am gonna turn this over to Margaret Lou. She was the project manager on this. She did a great job. And I will say that this could not have been done um, without the help of, of all of the departments. Um, so this was uh, truly a team effort. So Margaret, are you there?
Hi, yep, I'm here. I'm gonna begin sharing my screen. One second.
And this will be pretty quick.
Yeah. So, um, just a little quick agenda of some of the items that we're gonna go over. We're gonna begin with a, a very short little video overview and then I will demonstrate um, the ease of use of, using the application to submit um, uh, an issue and then um, going over some, instructions that we uh, have posted to the city website that will help guide uh, the community on some of the finer details, and use of the application. Okay, so, um, the access to the application is actually very simple. It's, it's found um, as the report and issue icon on the city's, website and um, once you click this uh, little clipboard icon, it will immediately launch the application where the customer will then um, answer a series of questions and, go forth from there. Hold on just a moment.
Margaret, if I could, I do want to just add, some have asked, do we have a mobile application? I want to say that our entire website is a mobile application. You pull our website up on your phone, it will basically resize for the use of that phone. So to that end, um, the website can be used and access any of the services.
Okay, so let me get out of this and, begin the video overview. Can everybody see? Here we go. I'm sorry, what?
We're only seeing the city website. We're seeing the presentation.
Oh, I'm in full screen. That's weird. Let me stop sharing, reshare. You see the YouTube scan? All right, take two.
Want to report a pothole, abandoned vehicle, downed tree, or other city concern? All you have to do is visit elsagundo.org and click the report and issue icon on the homepage. And in just a few simple clicks, city staff will be notified about the issue. You can report anonymously, or if you log in, you'll be able to track the progress of your report and receive notification when the issue has been resolved. Improve your community, El Segundo. Report an issue when you see one and the city will handle the rest.
And with that, Margaret, one, I do want to both thank Barbara and as well as Martha, because they put together that.
Charles, we're having a really hard time hearing you. I think you were thanking Barbara and Martha, but you couldn't hear.
Yeah, I was thanking Barbara and Mar- Martha for that uh, PSA.
Okay, can everybody see the city website on the screen?
Yes.
Cool, all right. So as um, as mentioned, report and issue very easily found up front and center, on the main homepage of the city website. Once somebody clicks this, they're actually gonna be directed to, the landing page of report and issue where they have three options to continue on, um, signing up for an account. Uh, logging in if you already have an account or continuing without an account, which basically is reporting an issue anonymously. So first step is, um, you know, if it's a life-threatening emergency, we wanna remind people that this application is not that. It, please dial nine-one-one um, to contact emergency services. But from a dropdown, there are a number of issues that somebody could report on, abandoned vehicles, illegal dumping, um, sanitary sewer waste, street furniture, et cetera. So, um, I'll pick B's. So once somebody selects a top-line issue, there um, can be some sub-issues to further refine, the type of issue that they wanna report. I wanna report Bs that are located on public property. And then the next item or the piece of information that we'll need is an address. So, we'll type in Main Street, El Segundo, and I'm gonna select this address. And I will mention that there are two options to entering the location for your issue. You can manual entry, or somebody can simply zoom in on this map and, and specifically just say, drop a pin. And what's nice about the map is when, if somebody zoomed in, they will also see that, you know, based on the issue selection above, whether somebody else has already reported the issue in that location. And we have a little legend for the status. So red, meaning it's new, green is a closed issue, yellow, actively um, under investigation or remediation. So, the next step, is that the uh, community has the option of attaching an image, whether, you know, I'm gonna take a picture of the beehive in the tree in the park. So if I wanted to, I can click yes. And then I can upload directly from my mobile device or desktop if that's where the image is. I'm gonna say no. And then they can, you know, large beehive in tree, if they wanted to add additional details, um, on the location or size or anything of that nature. Now, even though somebody can report an issue anonymously, they still have the option to, receive an update on the status of this issue or the progress of the issue, depending on what that is. I'll leave this checked for the moment and click next. I will enter my email address. And submit. Wait for it and you're done. So, since I checked the box to receive a status update, I, as the reporter, will also receive an email notification for this issue where I will have my issue number. I reported it anonymously and the location, type of issue, et cetera. And that is it. It's very, very simple to use and to Charles, um, also to review what Charles had said earlier. This works on a mobile phone. It sizes properly. There's no pinch and squeeze to look at details or any of that. And so I did wanna call out one last thing that, on our city website, we do provide some additional directions um, for the community under our city, report and issue instructions. And on this webpage, people, the community can find out, um, accessing report and issue through the website. They can look at how to report an issue. They can- They can, um, have a direct link as well, and we also give them some tips about, um, creating a shortcut on their mobile device to access the application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Margaret. I believe that's all we have as a relation to the presentation, or we're then happy to answer any questions. I, I don't think you guys heard me before, but I, I do want to thank Barbara, Margaret. I want to thank Martha as well as Public Works and all the other departments that would just get this application up and running, so thank you.
I think Councilor Prustak has a question or comment, Charles.
So, um, thank you for doing this, Charles. I think this is a great, uh, asset to the city. What I wanted to know is, is, is there, what is the timeframe that people can expect for a turnaround response? And then have we identified areas that are of higher importance so that we know that those are taken care of more quickly? And then what happens during a weekend or a holiday? Are, um, are, is, you know, how, what is the process from the backend to ensure that things are handled very on a, on a
Very, very good question. Um, in working with all of the different departments, we decomposed each of the actual tasks. So, many of the tasks have different, what you call SLAs, service level agreements, right? There are some that are four days, there are some that are five days. So, based on that list and working with Public Works, working with FIRE, we determine what that service level agreement is with respect to, uh, how quickly they were, they should receive a resolution for the actual issue. Otherwise, the, if it's going to take longer or if they need more time, any update that's actually keyed into the system will be automatically emailed, texted, and sent to the resident so that they're up to date on the latest status. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, it maybe, it would be helpful, so when the resident goes in to say, hey, I, I see a beehive and they posted, they can have, uh, there's a, there's, there's a, somewhere on that, you know, when you select beehives, that the response time will be X, so that there's an expectation. Because, you know, I'm sure the resident's gonna think they're gonna be responded to in an hour or ten minutes. And if, if it's a day, then it's, you know, you're just gonna create frustration. So, I think if you can, um, identify, you know, on the dropdown, like if I, in the, in the comments if I say beehives, you know, my, um, SLA is going to be within twenty-four hours or whatever, whatever the timeframe is, so that there's a clear expectation, because otherwise you're just gonna get frustration.
Yeah, that's a good point. We can look at that. Once the item is submitted, uh, everyone will get an acknowledgement of receipt, and then they'll get updates as people work them, but that's a good idea. Maybe we can look at if and how we can post, uh, the specific timeline for completion. So, we'll definitely take a look at that report back.
Okay, any other council comments or questions? No, doesn't look like it. Okay, anyone opposed to receiving and filing? Nope, we have consensus. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to, thanks, Charles and team. Great stuff. I've, I've used it several times. It works great for illegal dumping and other things.
Great, thank you.
Item nine, uh, twenty-twenty-one legislative platform representing official city positions on proposed regional, state, and federal legislation. Recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-one legislative platform. I see Martha Vizan Hurtado, so I'm guessing she's gonna present?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, I will take it away. All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. It is a pleasure to be here with you this evening and to share some highlights of the twenty-twenty-one legislative platform. The city's legislative platform encapsulates official city positions on proposed regional, state, and federal legislation. The twenty-twenty-one legislative platform aligns with the city council's five strategic goals, which focus on providing the highest level of service to the city's residents and businesses. The legislative platform provides a framework for the city of El Segundo's legislative program and serves as the foundation for our advocacy strategy at the regional, state, and federal levels. The platform serves as a reference guide for the city council, city officials, and staff in considering and evaluating legislative proposals. The legislative platform allows the city manager and staff to advocate for priority legislation on behalf of the city of El Segundo and take quick action on proposed bills that will protect community interest and local authority. The platform addresses legislative concerns in following areas: city clerk, electoral process, community service, economic development, environmental sustainability, fiscal and administrative, human resources, general government, planning, housing, and land use, and public safety. The city's primary legislative focus includes protecting local government control, maintaining local government revenue, pursuing public safety funding, obtaining funding for environmental sustainability, transportation, recreational technology, and public infrastructure improvements. This year's high priority bills at the state level will focus on affordable housing, broadband access, climate change action, COVID-nineteen relief, economic recovery, and racial equity. The city manager's office will monitor proposed regional, state, and federal legislation that impacts the city and ensure that the city takes a position in alignment with the platform. Our advocacy strategy for twenty-twenty-one includes continuing to build relationships by engaging with our regional, state, and federal representatives and their staff members to ensure El Segundo's interests are top of mind during the legislative session. Pre-COVID-nineteen, engaging with representatives included visits to Sacramento and Washington DC. But this year, it will look different due to social distancing and other safety protocols. Advocacy during a pandemic will include reaching out to schedule video meetings, attending virtual town halls hosted by our representatives, engaging on social media, engaging through emails, and sending position letters to ensure El Segundo's priorities are being considered. Our strategy also includes engaging with other regional stakeholders such as the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, Southern California Association of Governments, the League of California Cities, and the California Contract Cities Association to collaborate on issues and collectively bring a higher negotiating power to the table when faced with proposals that address our priority issues. The legislative platform will be updated throughout the year as necessary to address and prioritize new issues as they relate to the city or the region. The legislative platform does not preclude city council consideration of additional legislative or and regulatory matters arising throughout the year. Lastly, if an issue arises that it's not part of the platform, staff will request city council authorization to amend the legislative platform to include items as needed. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take your, uh, questions.
Alex, any comments or questions? Mayor Pottam?
I think most of these initiatives in the, in the platform or the positions are similar to ones we've taken in the past. I would say in furtherance of those, the only area that I did a double take on are in some of our public safety advocacy pieces. I think that we continue to invest heavily in support public safety measures. I think, though, that we are a bit over expansive in there when we start discussing cash bail initiatives and, uh, civil asset forfeiture. I think taking positions on those might distract from our, our overarching public safety requirements, and I would recommend we choose not to take a position on them.
I would support that. Thank you, Mayor Pottam. I'd say Councilor Drew nodding his head, yes, so is that, looks like we have consensus on that to drop that part, make an edit to the platform.
We can amend it.
Okay, and then would we need to, would we need to come back for another vote, or are we good? Or we're just that?
Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll amend it right now to reflect that.
Okay, great. Okay, um, yeah, because we're actually taking a vote on this matter, so are you gonna strike that? That would be the only change. Do, do you mind just specifying for the record and for the clerk what it is specifically we're striking from that platform? So, we know exactly what we're voting on, because everyone else, I think everyone's had an opportunity to review the legislative platform in detail, right? It's part of our packet. Yes, okay. So, if you guys could just, ladies could restate the, what it is we're striking before we go to the vote, that'd be great.
Right now, it says the city of El Segundo opposes, let's see, this is the, the one that you were mentioning, Mayor Pottam Pimentel, limiting lo- local police department's ability to collect and utilize asset forfeiture funds for a wide variety of police services. Was that the one? Modifying existing bail programs that are potentially harmful to El Segundo community. These are, um, issues that we would oppose as it stands right now in our, um, platform.
Yeah, it would be items for, uh, opposes, that'd be item two and three.
Okay. And we can strike those.
Okay, uh, Chris, are you doing a quick group, just a quick?
Yeah, just make sure I didn't miss one. Yeah, it was just those two and three.
So, we'll, uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we'll, we'll strike out bullets two and three. And if, for some reason, an issue comes up during the year involving those, and it's of interest to council, we will come back to you accordingly.
Great, well, great. Great job with the platform. What an improvement. I think we've only had that for a couple of years now. And what a difference it makes, makes our job so much easier when things come up. The, uh, let's see, let's go to a vote. Do we have a motion to approve the platform as amended by Mayor Pottam Pimentel?
So, moved?
Okay, do we have a second?
Drew's second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please take a voice vote.
Yes, hey, sorry, I was writing your names down. Uh, Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Hi.
Councilmember Prustak?
Hi.
Mayor Pottam Pimentel?
Hi.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Okay, it passes as amended.
Great, thank you. Much appreciated. Okay, item ten, twenty-twenty Economic Development Annual Report. Summarizing the key accomplishments of the city's Economic Development Division with the recommendation to receive and file the annual report. Mr. Mittnick, who will report on this?
Uh, Barbara Boss and Christina Ravelas, well, they're gonna, they're gonna give you a very short and brief presentation. They will consume no more than five minutes total time. And this is our last presentation from the staff tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, with that, warm introduction. Thank you, Mr. Mittnick. Mayor Boiles and Member of Council, members of council, uh, we're really excited, uh, to present, uh, the Economic Development Annual Report. And we know that twenty-twenty was not a year to celebrate economic development. It was a very challenging year. Our businesses are struggling. They continue to struggle. And, uh, what we're presenting this evening is really what we've done collectively as a city to help respond, respond to this pandemic and to help our businesses in any way that we could, to help them to survive, um, and in some cases thrive and expand, um, during this, this, this last year. So, you know, economic development is business retention, um, business attraction, business expansion, and hospitality and tourism. We've been working together on economic development for the last five years that I've been here and, and, uh, with others apart from me, and, uh, have accomplished a lot with the help of the Economic Development Advisory Council. And, um, if Al Kiyah, he's watching, hello, Al, thanks for all your help. And, um, there have been policy decisions at city council level. Um, we just made one tonight regarding the, uh, waiver of fees and extension of the use of the barricades. That's an economic development, um, decision. And so, thank you to council, um, for budget support, for policy support, for all that you have done and your commitment to economic development. And, um, just working in economic development for so many years, I know that, um, it really is not about one person or, or even a team of people. It's about every division of the city, city council's vision, um, and the community's vision to support the broader business community. And we have that, we have that down pat here in El Segundo. Always challenges, but, uh, it's just a pleasure to work in economic development here. So, with that, I'd like to, um, introduce you to Christina Ravelas. You already know Christina. She's been our Economic Development Coordinator for almost two years now. She's done a fantastic job, um, just been a huge support to the program. And, um, she's gonna go through how we've, uh, modified the economics. But we had a plan. We had a plan in twenty-nineteen, um, when we started our new fiscal year, um, and everything kind of went up in, uh, a bit of chaos. And we had to change, and we had to make a new plan. So, she's gonna give the, uh, high-level overview quickly of, um, the crisis response, specifically working with all hazards incident management team, business retention, um, specifically retail and restaurant retention was a, obviously, a huge, uh, are a very important factor, um, and hospitality and tourism. And then we still continued, um, with our business attraction efforts to try to bring new businesses into our commercial, our vacant commercial office space. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Christina Ravelas to give a brief report.
Thank you, Barbara, and, uh, thank you, Mayor Boiles and, um, and city council. I'm gonna stop sharing my video, and so we can just take a look at the presentation that we have here for you. Again, thank you for the opportunity really to present, um, our, our team's highlights, uh, specific achievements in twenty-twenty. And as you'll see in the coming slides, our team had to really pivot, as Barbara mentioned, to reshape the economic development strategy. This was done, of course, to focus on supporting our businesses to reopen, and particularly retailers, restaurants, hotels, um, who were, uh, affected by the, uh, health orders and, and their restrictions. So, I'll be sharing some results, uh, from a number of our marketing initiatives and the business outreach. But before I begin, I do want to acknowledge hazards incident management team that consisted of members across, uh, city departments. As the Economic Development Coordinator, I've been serving on this team as the business liaison, helping out with communications to our business community. In general, our communications outreach, um, last year included over forty, uh, business-focused communication bulletins. That was emailed to over six thousand of our business contacts. Uh, the incident management team also worked with the El Segundo Media to create a number of public service announcements. And, um, we produced specifically videos targeted to the business community to help them navigate, uh, through the COVID resources. That included, uh, the relief, uh, programs in place, the new protocols, the new guidance coming from state and county. And I want to acknowledge Darnell and his team, uh, Darnell Jenkins and the El Segundo, uh, media team for making that happen. Uh, in addition, we created webpages almost immediately to, on allsegundoofbusiness.com, on our, um, business dedicated website to provide information, uh, to our businesses regarding, uh, the protocols and guidelines. And, um, those pages were instrumental in, in providing communication because we had over thirty-three thousand new visitors, uh, just in a matter of months. I would say between June and December. So, you can tell that the business community was, uh, really engaged with our website, and, and they looked to us as a reliable source of information. In addition, the city took out full-page ads on El Segundo Scene Magazine to support the public health safety campaign that we had launched to, uh, encourage the residents and, and visitors to, uh, help businesses reopen and, and stay open. Um, as you saw in the previous flyer, um, in the last slide, we helped support the Gunda-to-go Chamberlet Program. And this was done to encourage people to support our businesses by, uh, picking up, uh, and placing to-go orders. We also designated parking spaces, thanks to PD and Public Works, that really helped make this happen. We also partnered with the Chamber, uh, to host a downtown business town hall. And we wanted to hear from our business community. And following that town hall, we received a number of, uh, or I should say, we received numerous requests, really, to provide outdoor dining in the, uh, public right-of-way. So, our immediate action from that was to ask our restaurants, citywide, what they needed to do to remain profitable and viable, uh, considering the, uh, constrained occupancy that, um, the, uh, county had placed. And what we heard from our business community was that they wanted to expand outdoors, and they wanted to make room for additional, uh, seating outdoors. So, um, a citywide team developed two surveys, one for the closure of Richmond Street and another one for the closure of one lane on each direction of Main Street. We sent this out to, uh, over five hundred of our downtown business contacts in which we received a hundred and forty-two responses, uh, and eighty percent of that, um, were, uh, in favor of it. So, then the team developed an application process for the program, which still exists today. And I'd like to acknowledge Sam Lee, uh, Elias, as well as Chief Donovan and Chief Whalen and their departments for really helping put this, uh, application process in place. And, uh, of course, once the outdoor dining program was established, we did some public relations outreach and provided quotes to local and national reporters about the program. Now, we, from what we just, um, shared with you, we really focused in, uh, supporting our downtown businesses, but we also wanted to support the entire business community and all the restaurants. But we also wanted to support the entire business community and all the restaurants and hotels citywide. So we looked at our hospitality and tourism campaign, our start here, and we revamped it with a new tagline and a new logo, reimagine, reopen, rediscover. Out of this new campaign, we were trying, of course, to support our restaurants. And then in November, late November, early December, as we all know, the state home order was reinstated and things became very restricted. So we tried to think about new ways, creative ways to still support our restaurants, our hotels, our, our retailers. And we pivoted and we created this really cute video, our shop and takeout local video for the holiday season. We shared it on social, on social media, not just locally but regionally. And it gathered over 340,000 views just in a number of days. And so you can tell that this campaign had a stellar performance. It also brought in over 1,600, 1,600 new visitors to our tourism website, destinationelsegundo.com, in which shops, things to do and the business directory were the top performing pages. Think this is indicative that people are interested in finding local businesses here in El Segundo to continue to support. And as a sneak peek, we have a second shop and dine local video coming out in Valentine's Day. So make sure that you keep a lookout for that. On your right, you see here a new campaign called the Hospitality Heroes. This is to promote El Segundo businesses in the hospitality industry. We produced a series of videos and the campaign will also allow for the community to nominate other hospitality businesses that I think should be acknowledged and we'll be launching this right after Valentine's. We have an outgoing hospitality and tourism newsletter that we design internally here. And we would distribute that on a monthly basis to over 4,000 subscribers. And the content that we curate for, for this newsletter is to really highlight things to do, places to shop, places to dine, places to order takeout, places to visit, places to stay. And I mentioned over the number 4,000 subscribers because last year we started with just about 1,200. And since then, we've really grown that list. So we had grown, what, 2,800 new subscribers to our hospitality tourism contacts. So, so we're really building a strong list of people to continue to engage with. So in addition to our hospitality and tourism marketing efforts, we continue to work to attract, retain and grow new businesses, which of course were also impacted by COVID. And the city formed, at first, the Economic Recovery Task Force. And this included members of EDAC and other local business leaders served on that team as well. And from those discussions, we launched a comprehensive economic recovery program called El Segundo Back to Business. Part of that program, a number of initiatives were put in place. We hosted the Back to Business Roundtable to discuss impacts of the pandemic across different industries from biotech to sports, entertainment to media. We had Congressman Ted Lieu, Senator Ben Allen, and representatives from the business, from the companies listed on, on the right here. They all joined Mayor Boils in this discussion. And to promote the roundtable on social media, we targeted C-level executives, business leaders, not just locally, again, not only in El Segundo, but across the region. And it performed really well with over 45,000 views. In addition, the communications and economic, economic development team also worked together to produce a series of videos called Real Stories of Resilience. The first episode featured CEO of Next Trucking, which joined Mayor Pro Tem. And we ran this video in October and it performed so well that we decided to run it again in December. As you can see on the number, on the metrics on the right, over 1.3 million impressions, which means folks were liking, they were sharing, they were commenting, and in total over 340,000 views. It was stupendous. The second episode with Senior Vice President of Boston Properties and Mayor Boils will be launching later this month. So I just want to take the opportunity to recognize Darnell Jenkins, Stevie Ryan, Robert from El Segundo Media for their work in producing these videos because these videos are made here internally or produced here internally. And we also directed our, the city's marketing agency, Resto Pacific, to conduct a research study. This was done to assess the, the COVID implications on the commercial real estate market to help guide our business attraction strategy. And findings from this effort will of course be instrumental as we're prepared to develop a new marketing plan over the course of this year and 2022. And as part of our ongoing economic development initiatives, we frequently speak with local business leaders and to capture their testimonials really about, you know, doing business here in El Segundo, why they moved in to, to the city and what attracted them to El Segundo. And again, this is another example of in-house collaboration, collaboration with the economic development team and El Segundo Media. In addition, we also keep, keep the business community informed through our business portfolio newsletter. We partnered with a commercial real estate PR strategist last year to help secure media interviews. And this was done to build, again, not just local, but regional and national awareness of the city's economic development activity. And the city was directly quoted in nine articles. So that's excellent. And before I hand it off back to Barbara, I just wanted, well, we want to thank really City Council for your support in economic development, approving the business license tax money back guarantee program that helps support our business attraction efforts. And also another action that council took was to help our hotels that have been severely impacted by this to give them a brief reprieve on their TOT tax. So thank you again for your approval of these things and back to you, Barbara.
All right. Thank you, Christina. Just want to end on a positive note and talk about an optimistic look ahead. As I said in the beginning, it's been a really hard year for businesses and I don't want to make light of that on any level. But we have had some really great success stories. Top Golf obviously is coming in, looking to break ground towards mid-February. We've got beyond me L'Oréal at 888 North Douglas, some really exciting projects in Smoky Hollow that you can see there. There's a former Boeing building on PCH 65700 that's undergoing a major transformation. And if you go to the next slide, potential housing and mixed use development on PCH as well. We're, we're updating our downtown specific plan, which will bring more vitality to the downtown area. We're continuing our marketing efforts and we continue to partner with the Economic Development Advisory Council that is transitioning into the Economic Development Corporation. So it's been a busy year. We're already well into 2021 and, and just wanted to give you that update on the economic development program and appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara and Christina. Great work. This is a receiving file, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Not seeing any. Okay, good work. Thank you very much, everybody. Much appreciated. Good stuff. Okay, do we have anyone opposed to receiving and filing? I don't think so. Okay, good. We have consensus there. Let's see. Okay, we're moving on to reports. City Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, City Treasurer, anyone on? I don't see anyone. I don't think so. Okay. Councilmember Jeru?
Yes, I actually did want to just bring up something that, that is starting to gain a lot of traction, I think is very important. For about the past 10 and a half months, we have watched while our kids have been forced inside, not allowed to attend school, not allowed to practice or play games, not allowed to express themselves through performing arts, be it music, dance, stage, and not allowed to congregate and be with friends. And it's beyond ironic that of all things, we are being encouraged to keep our kids in front of all the assorted electronics for hours upon hours each day. The very thing we've been trying desperately for years to get them to stop doing is now their only available outlet. This continued lockdown on activities and sports in our state is doing irreparable mental and physical damage. And the longer we stay on this path, the worse it's going to get. More than 43 states, I think we're probably up to about 40 state, 48 right now, have let their children play sports safely. And the data collected from these states shows that these sports succeeded in providing healthy activity and an outlet with minimal or no virus spread. My opinion that we are only now realizing just how important activities like youth sports and performance arts are to our kids and to us as parents. It's only when something has been taken away from you so completely that you realize it's important, which is why so many kids and parents pack up their car each weekend and head to places like St. George, Utah or Arizona to find some competition or look to squad on fields in name-buried cities and counties that have decided to look the other way. The fact is California kids, especially our teens, are losing hope. And in far too many cases, are simply just giving up. For some, organized sports and activities is their outlet on both the physical and social level. For others, it's the only way out or the only pathway into higher education. For those who relied on sports and other activities for their future, they have nothing to look forward to right now. Statewide, we are seeing dramatic, a dramatic rise in some scary metrics. Academic ineligibility, student dropouts, anxiety, depression, suicide ideation. The CDC reports that one in four young adults considered suicide during the pandemic. Mental health pediatric visits have increased by 24% for ages five through 11 and 31% for ages 12 to 17. This data is being ignored. Nothing is being done to address it and no one is advocating for our kids at the state level. Whether as a player, a cheerleader, a band member, a parent, a resident or part of the student body, these games and activities provided an outlet for social interaction, physical fitness, mental health and competition. The void that has been left by their absence is devastating. The time has come to advocate for our children and get them back on the playing fields and doing the things they love. I'm not just talking about the high school level. I'm also talking AYSO, Little League, softball, lacrosse, dance, drama, and all the other team sports and activities that are vital to our kids' development. In my opinion, we need to do this right now, not in a month, not over the summer, not next fall. The time is now. So as a community, I urge you, contact your board of supervisors, your, your congressmen and women, your senators, and most certainly your governor. Let's be respectful though. Let's use facts and reason in our correspondence. The data will speak for itself. These mental health and developmental deficiency numbers are real. It's a very real problem which will have real consequences if we do not act. You have all heard of the saying that the squeaky wheel gets the oil. On this issue, it is time to squeak really loudly. Our children's mental and physical health and wellness demand that we do so. I also urge, if you want to take a look at Let Them Play CA, Let Them Play California, it's a group that can be found on multiple social media platforms. They are a great source of information and data on this very topic to help you understand better what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Jeru. Councilmember Nicole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pass tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Prustak?
I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Just a few quick items, Mr. Mayor, one to, to echo and perhaps amplify a bit Councilmember Jeru's comments. We have seen in discussions at the county and with our state delegation that most all of these discussions have been entirely absorbed by the governor's office. So if citizens do or residents or groups do want to reach out, understand that your assembly member and your state senator are largely left out of this process as well. These are being dictated and as an emergency procedure. And so the comments and concerns they may have are probably best directed at the executive level. I would say that I was remiss, I wanted to pull item four, not because of our consent calendar, not because I opposed it, but I wanted to call attention to the job that Public Works did. Our street resurfacing is one of the great success stories of Public Works. It came in this time at almost 20% under budget and did a magnificent job in the repaving. That program is a year in, year out success that we pay with funds from SB1 grants and do a tremendous job with it. And I think Elias and his team have done a wonderful job and I wanted to call attention to that. Lastly, two items. I know we always talk about housing legislation. Please be mindful to residents out there and be advocates for yourself with your state senators, assemblyman. There are bills being mooted right now which are just as destructive as they were the last cycle. And there are perspectives on what zoning should look like that are almost mainstream in Sacramento that would have been hopelessly radical only 10 years ago. There is a perspective that R1 zoning is a, an artifact of a different era. And R1 zoning is ultimately what undergirds the way we live. So I would say be very mindful of the bills that are out there and know that we are advocating for you all the time on them. Lastly, multimodal transportation is not going away. I always have talked about cog transportation. We continue to work on programs to let us zip around the South Bay on bikes, scooters and the like. Those things will come to fruition, but with that, know if you're taking your electric bike south, that you've got to get off the beach bike path with it. Manhattan Beach is going to start enforcing the rules on electric bikes as they go down the beach. So just be leery and I will spare you the gory details of sanitation this time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have an item under my name and it's a great segue actually, Chris, because it's related to housing. But before we get to that, quick thing on COG, South Bay City Council of Government, a couple of things that the COG has been working on. One is the, we were able to get a presentation by Lawa, LAX essentially, at the last couple of meetings, one that Mayor Pro Tem sits on, which is the Transportation Committee, then the Board of Directors meeting that I sit on. And the COG is going to be drafting a comment level, a comment letter, excuse me, to Lawa expressing concerns about, from COG, about the Lawa expansion for a pilot project, excuse me, that's going on to build essentially Concourse Zero and Terminal Nine at LAX. It's substantially increasing the footprint and the capacity of that airport. We've been all over that as a council. We've met in closed session today on that matter. And we have some allies in that fight by way of some of our South Bay cities who actually spoke up during that last COG meeting. So there's going to be a comment letter coming from COG on that and also I suspect from individual cities in the South Bay that are concerned about Lawa's continued expansion. There's a general assembly. Usually it's in person. Obviously this year it's different. It's virtual. It's March 18, 2021. Christian Horvath, who's a city council member for Dondo Beach, has also been heavily involved in TEDx, is facilitating. It's free to sign up. And finally, it relates to COG, there's opportunities to serve. Chris knows about this well because this is really a Transportation Committee type item, but it's the Metro Service Council, which is a three-year term. If you ride metro, you're passionate about metro, buses, the train lines. It's an opportunity to sit on the council and it's fascinating stuff, especially if you're interested in this and you're a consumer or a customer of that service. So if you know anyone, either council or out there in the public, it's a great opportunity to, to serve on the Metro Service Council. And if you're interested, contact Jackie at southbaycities.org. That's J-A-C-K-I at southbaycities.org. Now moving on, we've got basically two items. We were asked by the California Alliance of Local Electives and other groups to oppose two housing legislation items, which are really a rebirth of two items that we opposed in the past 11, 20 and 902. to oppose two housing legislation items, which are really a rebirth of two items that we opposed in the past eleven twenty and nine oh two. Those are now Bill Nine from Atkins and Senate Bill Ten from Weiner. Weiner has been, as you recall, very active when it comes to advocating for housing and diminishing local control. And there is information in the packet. Essentially, if we have consensus on this, we are going to be drafting a resolution to oppose those two bills. So any questions or comments that Mike can answer or staff can answer? No?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, in your packet is a resolution that's already been prepared. So this is being proposed as an adoption of the resolution tonight.
Yes, thank you. And I suspect you'll probably read the resolution by title only.
Yeah, I'll be happy to. So in front of the council is a resolution, the City Council, the City of El Segundo, expressing opposition to proposed housing legislation, in particular Senate Bills Nine and Ten, and expressing support for action to further strengthen local democracy, authority, control. That resolution's in front of the council for your consideration.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Nickel, so moved.
Nickel, so moved. Carol, is that a second for you?
Yes.
Okay, great. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
All right. Pass this five oh.
Okay. Thanks, team. City Attorney Dave, I know you're representing your office. Anything to report this evening?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. City Manager?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. By way of follow-up, there are a few items that we will make sure we, we do the follow-up and report back to council accordingly. As for the next council meeting, two weeks from tonight, several items on the docket as in shaping up. We'll, we'll have one public hearing on water and wastewater rates. The Prop two eighteen protest ballot vote will be revealed on, on that evening and then we'll go from there. Some of the other items worth noting, we will have the fiscal year end report, financial report for fiscal year nineteen twenty, last fiscal year. We'll have a study session on the Park Place Transportation Project. We'll share with you where we are on that in terms of design and going forward. And we will have a recommendation on the Affordable Housing Services Provider project for City Council. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks, Scott. May, I, I know minutes are generally, we never have an issue, you know, no council member that I recall has pulled minutes because they weren't accurate. I would just ask, given that there were so many asks from council relating to the broadband discussion as well as the net promoter score, would you please just ensure those are very detailed in nature so that the action items by yours, your team are very clear in terms of what council is looking for?
I, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, if there's nothing further. I don't see anything. I think we, okay, we're adjourned. It is nine twelve PM. Long meeting. Thanks, everybody. Bye.